Good afternoon, everyone. I want to welcome everyone to what is a very full house at City Hall and thank you very much for being here. My name is Elizabeth Glidden and I am the Chair of this committee, which is the Committee of the Whole. This is a specially called meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the purpose of a public hearing regarding a proposed sick leave ordinance, municipal sick leave ordinance for the city of Minneapolis. I'm joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Reich, Bender, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Yang, Goodman, and Frye, and we are a quorum of this committee. I just have a couple of announcements as we begin. I know that people want to be in here with us and just I want you to know that Room 319, which is across the hall, is open so that you can sit down when you want to. That room does have a live stream in there of the meeting. That is also where we have interpreters that can assist for this meeting, either for helping you understand what is being said or for the purpose of coming and assisting with public testimony if you desire. We are asking every speaker to sign up and sign up sheets are out front and I believe that those are the primary announcements that I have been told to give. We are going to begin this meeting with a very brief about three-minute presentation of what we are talking about today, so I'd invite Susan Trammell to come up right now to the lectern and give us that overview. All materials are posted on our online agenda for this meeting, plus there have been a number of copies of the materials that have been out in the hall. Ms. Trammell.
Good afternoon, Chair Glidden and members of the committee. I am Susan Trammell and I'm going to just give you a brief overview of the ordinance that the public hearing is being held for today. Just as background as to the process that occurred, the Workplace Partnership Group was created in the fall of 2015 and through that work group, extensive engagement with 14 listening sessions and over 500 individuals either attending or giving written comments were received by the work group. And based on all the information that the work group received, they presented recommendations to the City Council on March 16th of 2016. And from that presentation on March 16th, we subsequently drafted a proposed ordinance for which this public hearing is happening. The scope of the proposed ordinances is that it would include all employers with six or more employees working in the geographic boundaries of the city. It would exclude the U.S. government, Minnesota State Departments and Agencies, and other county or local governments who have employees working within the city of Minneapolis. The employees must work 80 hours in a year in order to be covered by this ordinance. It would include all employees, whether they work full-time, part-time, temporary, or seasonal, as long as they've met the 80 hours. It would exclude independent contractors, who by definition are not employees. It would exclude construction workers, who are paid prevailing wage for all hours work, and construction worker apprentices. It also would exclude health care providers, who are casual employees. Employees would accrue one hour of paid safe and sick time for every 30 hours that they work for the employer. They could carry over, as the ordinance is currently drafted, 80 hours to the next year. The maximum accrual is 48 hours in a calendar year. They would accrue immediately upon employment, but they could not use it until they have been employed 90 calendar days with that employer. They could use this paid safe and sick time for themselves or many of their relatives and that's listed here on the screen as to who is a family member. They may also use this paid safe and sick time for physical illness, injury, or health condition, for medical diagnosis, care, or treatment, and then preventative care as well for them or their family members. And then there's a provision in there related to an absence due to, excuse me, domestic assault, sexual assault, or stalking, and it would allow for many different situations that would be covered under those terms. And, excuse me, the last provision under which they can use the paid safe or sick time is if either their business or the school of a family member closed and they needed to provide childcare and that closure was due to a public health emergency. There are certain notice and record-keeping requirements contained within this ordinance. The employer must post notices about the availability of and the accrual of safe and sick time and inform the employees of their rights under this ordinance. That notice must be given to the employee upon hire and be posted in languages that are spoken by at least 5% of the employees at that workplace. And if they have an employee handbook, it must be included in the employee handbook. It requires that the employers track the hours of employees who work occasionally in the city. So if an employee works in, say, St. Paul and in Minneapolis, the hours worked in Minneapolis must be tracked and they accrue one hour for every 30 hour worked within the city of Minneapolis. They must maintain the records for three years and there's an obligation on the part of the employer to keep the information that they receive regarding the health situation of the employee, any medical information, or any information related to a domestic abuse or sexual assault matter, keep that confidential. Now, if an employer has an existing paid time off policy or equivalent leave policy, then that's deemed to be in compliance with the ordinance. Although the ordinance encourages more generous policies and allows for the donation of leave and the exchange of hours if the employees wish to do that. It also allows employers who wish to advance paid accrued safe and sick time to do so without penalty. Now, the proposed ordinance before you has included within it an enforcement timeline, an implementation timeline. The Department of Civil Rights by this ordinance has given the authority to implement, administer, and enforce the ordinance. During the next, the actual active date would be July 1st of 2017 and from now until then, the department would need to use that time to create the rules and that would actually administer and enforce this ordinance. They would also have authority to investigate possible violations and to order appropriate relief for the violations. So from now until the end of June of 2017, the department would need to conduct stakeholder outreach and community engagement. Outreach needs to be both multilingual and culturally appropriate and also when they create these guidelines and frequently asked questions, they need to include all of those considerations as well. The ordinance also directs the department to explore work sharing agreements with the state of Minnesota and, as I said before, adopt the rules and create the notices in multiple languages for employer use. Those things would need to be done prior to the effective date and then, once the ordinance becomes effective, then upon a first violation by an employer, the department is required to only impose remedial actions, no penalties. Once the ordinance has been into effect a year, then the penalties that are included in the ordinance will begin to take effect. I thank you for your attention and I can stand for questions if you have any.
So I think we're going to move immediately to the public hearing. Thank you very much, Ms. Trammell. You can go ahead, maybe also in, I guess, in the media room, they can turn off the presentation. We are, just a couple of reminders, we are going to have a time clock here just to help you keep track of your time. We are asking speakers to speak for no more than two minutes, though you certainly do not need to use your full amount of time, so what you need within that. I am going to ask, because we are such a full room, if at least three speakers could physically come and line up, because I think we want to make sure we let as many people speak as possible, as expeditiously as possible, so that is my request, and we may want to ask the clerk to kind of help with that. You should have a number and I will call people in order that they have signed up. So number one speaker is Madeline Gardner, Speaker number two, Kava Zabawa, and Speaker number three, Tyrone Spenley. I would appreciate if you would come and line up. And Speaker number four is Guillermo Lindsay. So if people could get ready, I really appreciate it and I also appreciate people being here knowing this is such a full room and your patience and cooperation. Ma'am.
Okay. Hi, my name's Madeline Gardner. I'm a registered nurse at Fairview Riverside and nurses support sick time for everyone as a public health policy that really makes sense, to keep everybody well. I want to speak specifically to the necessity of including casual nurses in getting sick time. So every year at the hospital, the administration puts up signs at every entrance that says, "If you're sick, don't come to the hospital. Don't visit anyone, don't come in," because the vulnerable people at the hospital are at risk of getting secondary infections, small babies, elderly, people with immune suppression. Now, casual nurses make up a small but important amount of the nursing workforce and as nurses, we care very much about protecting our patients. We don't want to expose them to anything. So we need the support to stay home when we're sick and not expose our patients to illness. Just like anyone else, casual nurses get sick and just like anyone else, casual nurses depend on the income that they get from their jobs. So who's a casual nurse? I will be a casual nurse this summer. My husband will be working full-time in healthcare and I'm going to move to casual to have flexibility in my schedule, but we're still going to rely on my hours and I'm going to need that sick time when I get sick, because I don't want to expose young babies to being sick. So I would ask each of you City Councilmembers to think, if you've had a child or if your grandma was in the hospital, how would you feel if the nurse who was taking care of them was sick? We want that nurse to stay home, so we should give her the support to do that. Likewise, on my unit, the other nurses who work casual, some of whom work a lot of hours, you know, as many or more as many of the scheduled employees, many of them are moms who take care of their kids and they need the flexibility, but they still need that income. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Speaker two, and then three is Tyrone Spencer, four is Guillermo Lindsay, five is Rupa Kreiser.
Thank you very much for having us. My name is Charlotte Zabow and I'm a registered nurse of over 35 years and a member of the Minnesota Nurses Association. I worked as a casual RN at two Minneapolis hospitals for over 25, for 10 years as a casual nurse and over 25 years as a nurse. When my kids were young, I took a casual status RN position when no part-time or full-time positions were available. At first, I was apprehensive that there wouldn't be enough shifts as a casual for me to contribute to the support of my family. I soon found there were plenty of shifts available as the hospital really relies on flexible casuals, so fully, to fully staff the hospital at any given shift. At times, I was picking up as many as 32 hours a week or at a .8 schedule for, as a casual RN. However, unlike another RN who is scheduled .8 at the same hospital as casuals, we don't earn benefits such as earned sick time, healthcare insurance, or vacation time. When we pick up shifts and are scheduled, there's a lot of pressure to come to work, sick or not, as we are filling staffing holes in the schedule and also we suffer the loss of income when we are sick and aren't able to come to work for those shifts that we have been scheduled four weeks ahead. This exclusion of casual healthcare providers assumes casual employees don't rely on these jobs for income to support their families. I do. This exclusion assumes that casual healthcare providers don't get sick and come to work. I did. This exclusion assumes that casual healthcare providers don't need pay sick and save time just like all workers in order to keep our communities safe, as we all do. We strongly urge you to amend this ordinance to include all casual healthcare workers, just like all workers are covered under this ordinance, whether half-time, full-time, or casual status. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Speaker three, and then four is Guillermo Lindsay, five is Rupa Kreiser, six is Don Mashkow.
Hi, my name is Tyrone Spencer and my story is, I was working at Arby's one day. I worked there for three years and I have a medical situation where I have bowel obstructions and I had one at work and due to that, I went to my manager and spoke to him about my situation, that I couldn't work today, that I had to take myself into the hospital. He wasn't trying to hear it, so he told me to do what I have to do. So I ended up leaving, took myself into the hospital, and I came back. He was doing everything he can do to get back at me, like I went from being a shift manager to full-time, started cutting my hours, went from part-time, and due to that, laid on rent, lost my job, I mean, I lost my car, and that's just my situation of working at, being at work and getting sick. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Speaker four, if Speaker four is here, Guillermo Lindsay.
And Guillermo Lindsay could not make it at this early time, so we switched numbers.
Okay.
Okay. My name is John Richard. I live in South Minneapolis. I'm the Employment and Training Manager at Pillsbury United Communities. I want to speak to this from our experience as running a jobs and training program. We primarily work with people, low-level workers, people who've had long-term associations from the workplace, people with multiple barriers for employment. I cannot tell you how many times we've helped somebody, people worked really hard to get back into the workforce. They get the job, they're proud of themselves, things are picking up. Six months later, we hear back for them, unexpected illness, a child gets sick, they had to miss three, four days of work, bingo. They're back at the job search program. And the reality of it is, the more you do quick switches from job to job to job like that, every time you're back seeking work, it becomes more and more difficult. People look at your job record and say, "Well, this person's not reliable. This person was sick. This person had a sick child," like I'm guessing everybody on this council has experienced when you needed to call in sick from work. I just want to say very briefly that if we are serious about looking at employment and training as a path out of poverty, there has to be a provision for sick time for all workers.
Speaker number five, Rupa Kreiser. Speaker six is Don Mashkow. Speaker seven, please, Mary Schwartz, and Speaker eight, Kate Cummings. Thank you, ma'am.
Hello, my name is Rupa Kreiser and I live in South Minneapolis in Ward 13. My mom is a single parent and-
And it will, it will pick you up.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Trust the magic of the speakers. They will do it.
Okay. My mom is a single parent and retired school teacher and she adopted me and my sister from India in the 80s. When my sister was about 12 years old, it was apparent that she would have some severe mental health issues. And so what that meant is that my mom would take my sister to school, sometimes she would get scared and would just have to go home. And because of my mom's school's generous sick leave policy, she was able to be there for my sister and take her home in her time of need. Because of my mom's school's generous leave policy, she, it wasn't a financial hardship for us. It shouldn't take being in a professional job to be able to take care of your family. I'm not a parent, but I know that kids can be unpredictable, illness included. So I urge you to pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number six, and Speaker number seven is Mary Schwartz.
Hi, City Councilmembers. My name is Don Mashkow. I work in Human Resources for Fairview Health Services. I'm here today representing three twin-city healthcare organizations, Fairview Health Services, Children's Hospital and Clinics of Minnesota, and Alina Health. All of our healthcare systems are largely and highly complex organizations that deliver 24-hour a day, 365 days a year. We take our role in caring for our patients and our employees very seriously. We also need flexibility to provide care when and where it is needed. We continue to remain concerned about how the ordinance impacts our casual employees. We appreciate that the council has recognized the casual staff who work in healthcare, in the healthcare field, and need to be exempt from this ordinance. However, as drafted, the language is very narrow in scope and does not match Minnesota's statutory definitions for healthcare providers and does not address the complexity of our healthcare workforce. They can be nurses, paramedics, physical therapists, transport aides, and nursing assistants. Casual employees choose to work on a casual basis because it allows them the freedom and flexibility to work when and where they choose. For many employees, working on a casual basis is considered a benefit and one of the features they seek when applying and remaining with a healthcare organization. One of the ways we ensure sick employees don't come to work is by offering those shifts to casual employees. Those are employees who have voluntarily chosen to work on a casual basis. This means they are inherently working only when we have a business need and they have desired to work that shift. Specifically, we ask you to take a careful look at the administration and regulation of this ordinance and rework as necessary so as to not create administrative burden, additional tracking, and record-keeping, especially for employees who travel among more than one site. Our current systems do not track based on geographic locations. We'd like assurance that our existing PTO sick time programs comply. We look forward to working with you and your staff to address these issues in the future, in the near future, and want to again, thank you for your time today.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Speaker seven, then eight, Kate Cummings, nine, Dan Swenson-Clatt, 10, Joe Woods.
Okay. My name is Mary Schwartz and I'm Vice President of Human Resources for Ebenezer. We provide health and housing services, including skilled nursing care, assisted living, and independent senior housing. We provide this care not only to seniors throughout the metro area, but also those living in outstate locations such as Lake City, Red Wing, and Baxter, Minnesota. Our 2,200 employees, out of our 2,200 employees, we have about 300 of them working in Minneapolis and of that number, about 200 of them work in one of our healthcare settings that provides 24/7 care and services. In those settings in particular, we are never closed, so that anything that presents the potential to disrupt our staffing is concerning to us. I have to say, I support the essence of the ordinance. I think employers should provide sick time to employees and we provide a very generous paid time accrual program to anyone who has regularly scheduled hours and that can be a very, very minimal, very minimal amount of hours. But as it relates to the ordinance, we are concerned about how we would manage the administration of this to on-call employees. I'm not clear why we would pay sick time for employees who aren't required to accept a shift to begin with. If an on-call employee is sick, they simply don't accept that particular shift. We move on and go down the list and offer the shift to the next on-call employee. And I should say that we have ample openings and opportunities for people to pick up as much as they want. If one particular shift doesn't work, they can always call in or will be calling them again within the next few days, probably. One last thing is that we provide housing and services not only in Minneapolis, but across Minnesota, so this makes me concerned that this ordinance could force us to treat people differently based on where they work and this would be against our philosophy of providing consistent benefits to our employees across the organization, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next, Speaker number eight.
Kate Cummings. Hello, good afternoon and hello, Madam President and the City Councilmembers. I'm Kate Cummings. I'm also a nurse. I'm the Director of our Hospice and Palliative Care Program at Fairview. We'd like to just state and let you know an important perspective on this topic and that's the mobile nature of our workforce. At any given time, our over 700 employees who care for over 2,300 patients in 14 counties are across our area, in counties in Minneapolis and so on. At any hour, at any day of the week, we go from Stillwater to St. Cloud, Minneapolis to Elko, and our staff are ready, their cars, their office, to provide services as nurse, physical therapist, music, massage, physical, occupational, and also our hospice and home care aides. The flexibility of hours and location and variety of job roles is what is important for people coming and working with us as an attractive employer. In fact, many of our employees do choose to work as casual, which allows them to actually sign up for multiple hospitals and other home care agencies to give them a choice of where and when and how long they'd like to work. For us, the concern is how would we track all these multiple employees that work in so many other cities and counties in our area, plus have the opportunity to have different coverage for their care in Minneapolis, but maybe not in another part of the city, the state? We can't underscore that we support getting healthcare coverage, but looking at this as being a particular challenge for us. At any given day and time, our staff can go from Bloomington, Richfield, to Minneapolis for visits that occur. Our primary focus is on delivering the highest quality, most comprehensive, and patient-centered care. And this ordinance, in this area, seems to overcomplicate and would really like to look at how best this could be managed and thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Speaker nine, Dan Swenson-Clatt, Speaker 10, Joe Woods, Speaker 11, Dave Hancock, and Speaker 12, Dave Amundson.
Chairman Glidden, Councilmembers, thank you for offering us the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Daniel Swenson-Clatt. I'm a resident of southwest Minneapolis and for the past 10 years have owned and operated Butter Bakery Cafe in southwest Minneapolis. I speak in favor of this proposal. I speak for many small business owners in Minneapolis who share with you that we value our employees, we succeed when our communities thrive, and when all are welcome, and when opportunity is shared. I believe small businesses can and should lead Minneapolis in its goal to remove racial inequities, help it become one Minneapolis. I'm committed to treat all of my workers fairly, to pay a living wage, and to support them to meet their needs. And yet, I didn't have the technical knowledge or support to offer paid time off to any employees beyond one full-time baker. Nearly a year ago, I chose to implement the original Earn Sick and Save Time proposal in my own a year ago, I chose to implement the original Earn Sick and Save Time proposal in my own business for all of my twenty-one employees. If I was going to encourage others to accept it, I had to live the change myself. I knew I could do better. It was an investment and it paid off. The adoption of the proposal has not been burdensome, or onerous, or costly. Instead, it has provided my staff with a sense of security and an investment in my business. It has reduced costly staff turnover and the associated cost of retraining. We are a growing business because of this. And while it has added about one percent to my payroll costs, it has produced a return far beyond that. This proposal is good for business. Not caring for employees is anti-business. Not protecting customers from sick employees is anti-business. Not removing the inequities that create a have-and-have-not society is anti-business. Not sharing the true cost of labor across all of our economy is anti-business. Earn Sick and Save Time is not anti-business. I urge you to support this proposal.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to ask a favor of folks. I know that there may be ways that you want to show support or other things. And if maybe you wouldn't mind doing something like this, I know I just, but it's, I'm asking you, please, just so that we're able to make sure every speaker can get through and their speeches. Speaker number ten?
Hi, my name is Joe Woods. I live at 929 Portland in downtown Minneapolis. I've lived there for twelve years. I own a business in Jacob Fry's Ward. And I am all for paid sick time, for paid benefits, and paid vacation. I provide all of that to my management employees. I could not be against this proposal the way it stands any stronger. It's terrible. There are so many holes in it. Whenever I look at a proposal like this, I look at, I follow the money. And who is going to pay for this? I'll tell you who's going to pay for it. My customers will pay for this in higher prices. Currently, in Minneapolis, right now, my customers pay the highest sales tax on liquor in the country. No other place do they pay higher. My customers currently pay the number four highest liquor sales tax in the country. No other, there's only three other places that are higher. In addition to that, there's only three states in the country that do not have a tip credit. My customers are also paying for that. My employees are the highest, some of the highest-paid servers and bartenders in the country. So all of those things, my customers are already paying for it now. This city council is asking them to pay for paid sick time as well. There's, I know that there's ordinances around the country that have this, or cities that have the same similar type ordinances. Businesses are moving out of those cities. Jamba Juice has left San Francisco. Toyota is leaving San Francisco because of laws like this. The very people that this is designed to help, it will hurt the most because there will be less jobs, less tax base. Businesses are not going to move here and relocate here because this is not a business-friendly thing. This drives costs up. The record-keeping nightmare for small businesses will be an absolute nightmare.
Sir, if you could just finish-
Other people have went over.
Yep, and I'm going to give you that flexibility too, but it does have a limit. So that's why I wanted to add that up.
You know, I may have to dial back my vacation and benefits. The mayor's hanging their, you guys are hanging your hats on this study that the Minnesota Department of Health did. This study does not point to one case, not one case, of someone getting sick in that study. I've called this Department of Health. They've been kind of calling me back and won't, they don't, they don't return my, any of my calls. With regard to the hospitality industry-
And I am going to ask you now to please-
I have one last point.
Yes, thank you, sir.
One last point.
All right, everybody else just-
In the hospitality industry, my servers work for tips. The majority of the bartenders and servers work for tips. They will still come in sick because the lion's share of their pay is through tips, not through the three, four, or five hours of minimum wage pay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaker ten, Dave Hancock. Speaker, excuse me, eleven, Dave Hancock. Twelve, Dave Amundson. Thirteen is Mike Noble.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the council. My name is David Hancock. I'm employed by Accra, a large home healthcare provider, providing services to people with disabilities and older adults across the state of Minnesota. We currently serve about forty-eight hundred individuals with disabilities and older adults, and we employ over five thousand employees. We're also a member of the Minnesota Home Care Association, and I'm here on their behalf today as well. I want to start by saying that Accra and the Minnesota Home Care Association are in support of providing whatever level of benefits that we can to our hourly employees. So we are not opposed to this ordinance, proposed ordinance. A couple of caveats and a request for guidance is what I've come here for today. The caveat is that home care providers are often reimbursed by insurance companies and government programs at a very fixed rate. So anytime there's an increase for benefit costs like this, we cannot pass that along to a customer. We don't have a product or a menu item that we can up the price on. So that's one caveat. The guidance that I seek is this. In the summer of two thousand and fifteen, the Service Employees International Union, SEIU, and the state of Minnesota, reached and enacted a collective bargaining agreement covering most direct service employees or personal care attendants in the state of Minnesota. Provider agencies like those that belong to the Minnesota Home Care Association were not considered the employer for the process of this CBA. It was the state of Minnesota. So my questions are these. Does this proposed ordinance include the personal care assistance that were covered in this collective bargaining agreement, or are they considered employees of the state of Minnesota as in that collective bargaining, collective bargaining agreement, excuse me? PCA agencies often receive an increase in the reimbursement to cover the sick leave mandate of that collective bargaining agreement. So my question is, does the city of Minneapolis intend to seek an increase in those reimbursement rates? And my final point is that the PCA is under the collective bargaining agreement that we now live, earn a PTO at one hour for every fifty-two hours' work, and they have to work six hundred hours before they can begin to use those hours. That's in conflict with the ordinance that's before you today. We're not opposed to that. We're just seeking additional guidance, if you would, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Speaker twelve. Speaker thirteen is Mike Noble. If you could please get ready. Speaker fourteen is Scott Riddle. Speaker fifteen is Heather Farr.
Good afternoon. I'm Dave Amundson. My company is Trey Who's Builders. We're at thirty-seventeen Fourth Avenue South in Minneapolis. It's our thirty-fourth year in business. We have twenty-one people that work at Trey Who's, architects and carpenters and a few others. So I am opposed to this, and I'm opposed, one, just on principle. I just don't think this is a good idea for cities to begin micromanaging businesses in this way. We already have layers of regulations from the federal government, state government, and the more regulations that we have to record and document, it's very difficult to keep up with that. We have all we can handle to keep our clients happy. We have to do everything right for everybody all the time. It's a lot of work. It's intense every single day. Many of my competitors don't have employees. They call all of their workers subcontractors. Yeah, I have unlimited time here. I don't know if you noticed that. So I bet it's a minute or so. So my concern is, many of my competitors don't, they call everybody a subcontractor. They don't have to pay payroll. They don't have to pay health insurance. They don't have to do sick, they do nothing. On the other side of that coin, the main complaint I hear from my clients is, you're too expensive, okay? Well, I can't compete with them when they are not doing those things. My suspicion is, with more, with laws like this and others coming, I'm sure, I will become more expensive and they will not. Therefore, I have fewer opportunities for work, and the fewer opportunities I have for work, the fewer opportunities I can give to people to be employed. And that's just the way the world works. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mike Noble, and you can come up a little closer just so others behind you have room. Next, we have Scott Riddle, then Heather Farr, and then speaker sixteen, Holly Hartford.
My name's Mike Noble. I'm with the Normandy Inn here in Minneapolis at four oh five South Eighth Street. And thank you, Madam Chairman, and thank you, council members, for hearing me today. My comments are brief, but during the course of this, the development of this proposed ordinance, I've been involved. I've listened and learned a fair amount about it. And to some extent, I've been shocked by the scope of it. And the main point I want to make, or the main concern I have, is just that instead of making a sweeping change in our city and how we operate, that we take small incremental steps, kind of take it out for a test drive, and see how it works. When I initially did the calculation for my business, I thought, okay, forty-eight hours of accrued sick time per employee at about seventeen dollars an hour, well, that's about seventy-six thousand dollars a year for me, or for the Normandy Inn. And capitalized at eight percent, that means that this sick time contribution has a value to my business of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Or if I had to just take a hit for that, for the sick time, it would, it would decrease the value of my business nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And so then I think, okay, well, that means the value of my real estate is lower by nine hundred and fifty thousand. Okay, well, that means the value of everybody's real estate is lower. And gee, that really erodes the tax base of the city. So, and I don't want to sound complaining because I think that there's great validity to all of the comments that have been made about the need for sick time. But I'm just, just wanted to present the numbers. But furthermore, I now understand that PTO will be considered qualified as sick and safe leave. But in my particular situation, and I think in many other situations that people have, their collective bargaining agreements define, they don't define PTO. They define vacation pay. They define personal day, or personal day. They define-
If you could wrap up your-
I will. They define diversity day. And so I please ask you that when you do construct this proposed ordinance further, that you specifically include all these other things that are intended to be paid time off for people. Because we do offer seventeen to twenty-two paid days a year, and we just want to make sure that when you say PTO, that you kind of define all the things that are inclusive in that.
Thank you, Mr. Noble. Thank you. Speaker fourteen?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Scott Riddle, and I'm the president and CEO of Walker Methodist. And we're a nonprofit senior living company, and we have about eleven hundred employees, half of which are in the city of Minneapolis. And we provide paid time off to all of our full-time and our part-time employees. But I want to come to you today and have a little bit of concern about how this ordinance relates to the casual healthcare worker and how you would define that. We appreciate the attempt to exempt the casual healthcare worker from the proposal, but the language does fall short. And I'm requesting that you take a look at that. The senior care sector is not like most businesses. We are charged with taking care of some of the most frail and, and quite frankly, very vulnerable population of our society. We take that very seriously. That in turn requires us to follow quite a few regulations at the state and federal level, which affects our staffing every single day. At any one time, that's how we use casual employees, to fill in those shifts so that our full-time and part-time scheduled employees can stay home when they're sick. On any one particular time, we could have many, many open positions. Matter of fact, we have forty open positions right now at our health center on Bryant Avenue, and we have a job fair tomorrow for anyone who is interested for those positions. But the important thing here is, it doesn't, this ordinance, we worry about the requirement that they be licensed, because we have a lot of people who are unlicensed certified nursing assistants. If the requirement to pay four times the minimum, federal minimum wage, in our industry, it has a cap on Medicaid and Medicare, we simply, the model doesn't work to pay that much for these workers. We'd love to do it, but we just simply can't. So I'd ask you to reexamine that portion of the ordinance. As I said, we do offer paid off-time off for all of our full-time and part-time employees, and we'd like our casual workers to become regular scheduled workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifteen, and then we have speaker sixteen. Seventeen is James Colkins. Eighteen is Dan McElroy.
Good afternoon. I'm Heather Farr. I live in downtown Minneapolis proper, and I work outside of the city, but serve the Minneapolis community. And I own an employment service. I'm putting people back to work. And I work along with my peers and involve the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association. We represent over a billion dollars of business in the state of Minnesota, so it is a state, also serving the Minneapolis community. I just want to be an advocate for employees, and that's what I'm passionate about doing, is being that bridge and being that gap and getting people back to work. And I'm not against taking care of employees. That's why in our business, every forty-two point five hours that I work and accrued, an hour is given of time off as well to our employees. And that's not after ninety days, that's immediate. And I just wanted to create some awareness to businesses and small businesses out there and the staffing industry in general. We're looking to take care of employees too, and we're looking to continue to provide that resource. But as others have said, that cost needs to come from somewhere. And so I'm asking you to consider employment services and those of us that are creating that bridge and gap in employment, and think about how that impacts us, logistically speaking. I, I can't even wrap my head around how I'm going to work with other staffing services. There's, I mean, hundreds of staffing services and competitors here locally. It's a very healthy market, which is great for business, but it's also not great for tracking those hours as the current proposal is written. So I'm all for employees. I'm all for taking care of them. We all are. We just want to make sure that this is something that can be done accurately and correctly. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Speaker sixteen, seventeen?
Yes, thank you. My name is Holly Hatch-Suresuk. I am the co-owner with my husband of Senai Senlak. It's a Thai restaurant in northeast Minneapolis. We've been there about eight years. Our business employs twenty-seven individuals in one location. Sixty-two percent of our employees are immigrants who are non-native speakers of English, including my husband, although he sounds like a native speaker. I am in favor of progressive causes of social justice, of access and equity. I am in favor of citizens and employees having access to the supports they need to live healthy lives, including paid sick and safe time. However, I'm not here to speak in favor of the Safe and Sick ordinance, not as it is currently written. While some would argue that those who support the idea in principle should stay out of the weeds and not dig into too many details, I believe it is in the details that the true impact of a broad-reaching public policy is illuminated. While there are several sections of the policy with which I, about which I am concerned, I will focus on just one of them due to the short time. The Safe and Sick policy, as currently written, provides up to a thirty-seven and a half percent greater benefit to part-time than full-time employees. This policy would require restaurant employers to allocate their limited wage resources from slim margins disproportionately to part-time restaurant staff. In the restaurant industry, kitchen staff are typically full-time employees, and service staff are more often part-time. Kitchen staff are more often ethnic, cultural, and linguistic minorities. They more often have educational, skills-based, or immigrant status challenges to seeking higher-wage jobs. Yet, given the current structure of the Safe and Sick policy, restaurants will be required to distribute proportionately less of their wage resources to these staff than to the part-time tipped staff who are the higher-wage earners. Thus, the maximum number, I believe the maximum number of annually accruable hours should be indexed according to the employee's average work week. It is unjust to fail on this front. Others may argue that servers won't use the time allotted them but will trade shifts instead so that restaurants won't actually use their money to pay those employees. Even if this is true, it does not justify setting into law an unjust policy. Anything worth doing is worth doing right. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker seventeen, James Colkins, thank you.
Chair Glidden and council members. My name is Jim Colkins, and I'm here today on behalf of the Minnesota Nursery and Landscape Association, which represents more than two thousand members in the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area and across the state. Policies like the Sick and Safe Time ordinance being discussed today would have significant consequences for many of our members, which include growers, garden center operators, landscape designers and contractors, landscape irrigation and lighting providers, lawn tree and landscape service providers, and a multitude of allied industry partners and suppliers. It is an industry that values its employees and an industry that I have spent my entire working life in, and an industry that I'm proud of. working life in, and an industry that I'm proud of. YBNA believes that employee benefits packages, including sick leave benefits, can be advantageous to both employers and employees, and supports these types of benefits from a voluntary, best-practice perspective, when employers are able to provide them. Many of our member firms already offer benefit packages that variously include sick leave or paid time off, while others are hopeful that they will eventually have the financial resources to offer these types of benefits in order to attract and retain good employees. Every business is, however, unique, and these complex business decisions, these are complex business decisions that are best left to individual employers and their employees to work out. They are not something that should be mandated by governments as a one-size-fits-all policy, which are rarely prudent and often have unintended consequences. Public health and safety is the primary justification for the proposed Minneapolis Sick and Safe Time Ordinance, and variously and repeatedly this is stated in the draft ordinance itself. This is a laudable goal, but there is little scientific evidence that this outcome would be achieved. Ultimately, it is small business and medium-sized businesses that would be most affected by the proposed ordinance, and these impacts have essentially been ignored or minimized during the city's process. Once again, the Minnesota Nursery and Landscape Association supports these types of benefits on a voluntary basis when employers are able to provide them, but does not support the mandated Sick and Safe Time Ordinance that has been recommended to the Minneapolis City Council. It is a flawed regulatory outreach and an example of government micromanaging private business. We therefore ask the city to reject this ordinance and work with the business community to find a better alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dan McElroy. Then we have speaker nineteen is Scott Colstead. Speaker twenty, Erica Sanchez Sanders. Speaker twenty-one, Matt Bartholomew.
Good afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to share some ideas. My name is Dan McElroy, and I represent the Minnesota Restaurant Association and the Minnesota Lodging Association. The boards of each of our associations have adopted policies in support of two key goals that are in common with this proposal. We do not want our employees to come to work sick, and we do not want our employees to lose money when they can't work on their normal schedule. We think we've suggested a better idea, we think we also can tell you about some technology that is working, a more creative approach than this mandate. We know there are a handful of cities, about twenty-four out of twenty-five thousand cities nationally. We think Minnesota can be a leader in adopting a better way to solve this problem, a more creative approach. Our average member is open a hundred hours a week. I have members open a hundred and sixty hours a week. About half our members today are using automated scheduling for their employees. I'd ask you to take a look online at wheniwork.com or hot schedules dot com. These are very powerful tools for allowing employees to trade shifts, to add shifts, to pick up shifts when we posted, and they really work. We also understand the strong belief by advocates and by perhaps the majority of the council, that the council wants to change the law in Minneapolis to create an environment where we really solve this problem. We suggest a different approach, that we call full disclosure. We would support an ordinance in Minneapolis that required all employers with ten or more employees to have a written sick or safe leave policy, sick and safe leave policy, that could also be paid time off, to be mandated to provide that in writing and in a language-appropriate format to their current and future employees. And most powerful, to make it available to their guests and to anyone else who asks for it, so that we fully disclose how we handle this issue. I also want to make clear that it is against state law to allow an employee in a restaurant to work front or back of the house when they are sick. It's also a violation of law for the employee to come to work sick. We think that makes it a little different in our industry, but we think a full-disclosure law would make a huge difference. So we ask you to adopt a more creative approach. We'd be happy to work with you on the details of that. We're excited about solving a problem in the best possible way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Scott Colstead, then Erica Sanchez Sanders, then speaker twenty-one, Matt Bartholomew, then speaker twenty-two, Chris Anderson. If people could go ahead and physically line up if possible?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam President, and City Council Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you today. My name is Scott Colstead, and I serve as the Executive Director of the Institute for Athletic Medicine. IAM is a network of twenty-eight outpatient physical therapy, hand therapy, and chiropractic clinics located throughout the Twin Cities, with four locations serving the city of Minneapolis. Additionally, we employ athletic trainers to provide injury prevention, evaluation, and management at high schools, small colleges, and youth sport tournaments across the Twin Cities. Our reach extends locally and across the state. With respect to our athletic training program, we hire casual athletic trainers to fill in when our core staff, who are eligible for paid time off programs, when they are unavailable due to illness or to help us otherwise meet demand. Hiring casual athletic trainers affords us the flexibility and the capacity to serve the community effectively. Technically constructed, however, this is an extremely complicated ordinance for organizations similarly situated that cross municipal boundaries as part of their work. For example, it is not uncommon for organizers of youth sport tournaments to host venues in one community but rely on venues in other communities. For example, specifically, a hockey tournament hosted at the Excel Energy Center and the same day can also be hosted at Mariucci Arena. This creates unique disparities within a job class, in some cases within one employee on the same day. As a result, to be incumbent on IAM and other similarly situated organizations, to develop new processes, procedures, policies, and highly complicated administrative infrastructure to manage sick time benefits for casual athletic trainers who work in a variety of locations all on the same day. We ask that you reconsider the technical construction of this ordinance, and we look forward to answering any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, speaker twenty, Erica Sanchez Sanders, then Matt Bartholomew, then Chris Anderson, then speaker twenty-three is Stephanie Darrow.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Council Members. My name is Erica Sanchez Sanders. I am here on behalf of NAC and myself, I'll put that out there. There's a lot of speak regarding this ordinance on numbers and, you know, infrastructure and things of that nature. So I would like for you to empathize with me as just a person. I am a college student, I am attending Henley University, I am going for my bachelor's in law, and I'm hoping to build off of that. Now, in this, I have to work, I have to provide for myself and my family, so I decided to get jobs, to work. I don't need anything too fancy. So I work for a corporation, a holiday corporation, if you will, work my way up through those rankings. Now, that goes from being a cashier, truck, everything in between. You guys know the work. Through this, I've become a night manager. I get benefits that I have earned and I'm able to keep. Unfortunately for me, I have leukemia, and I'm diagnosed with kidney failure at this point in time. I have to attend dialysis and then eventually chemotherapy. Now, these are unforeseen circumstances, and although they do affect everyone, including my employment, they affect me more so than anyone, my mother, my family, and things of that nature. I was unable to care for myself properly due to working. I was unable to ensure that I had what I needed. And as a result, I angered my supervisor. In her anger stage, she decided to take this out on me. I went from certain hours of the day where I could manage myself and get over things to working all these hours that I had no idea. And y'all, had I had earned sick time, I would have been able to care for myself. Had I had this, I would have been able to earn what I earned and then to be able to show. Instead, these people wanted, wanted the customer to see me sick. They wanted to see me crawl, they wanted to see me suffer, in my personal opinion. And it pissed me off. I work, I don't ask for anything, I don't beg. I'm a proud woman, and I work for what I get. I should be able to reflect that in any way possible. This ordinance isn't just speaking out to me and my personal issue, and all of us here, we're not talking to you as in this is a little slip up here, a little slip up there. People are here. We are here to say something and to speak to you, not on a numerical scale, but on an empathetical scale, on an interpersonal scale, on a level that we know that you can understand. So council members, Madam Chair, I ask you to just think about that and go to your decision.
Thank you. Is speaker twenty-one here?
Yeah, Matt generously switched with me. I have to get to work in about ten minutes, but I'm, my name's Eli Adelsonstein, I live in south Minneapolis.
What is your, what was your speaking number?
Forty-eight, we switched.
Okay, all right.
Thanks for noting that. I have a short story and just some notes, but I want to echo that there's a lot of numbers and a lot of things being put out here, but there are a lot of people that can't speak to that, that can speak to the empathy issue. And I'm a person who has worked in the restaurant service industry, both in the back, full-time, as well as part-time in the front of house. And about a month ago, I got a respiratory virus that was pretty bad, and I took off a couple of days of work unpaid. I was able to switch some things around, but didn't take off as much as I probably should have. And regrettably, I was working maybe, I was healthy enough to work, but I was working with food and worked my best to keep clean, but I think had I had the option in that emergency sort of situation, I definitely would have taken it, and it would have protected me, my coworkers, and the people that come through the restaurants that I work in. There's been mention of other cities that have enacted these sort of changes, and I've worked in them before, in Oakland and in San Francisco. And I think there's like a lot of scare tactics that happen, and I just want to, I've worked with management of restaurants in those cities, and while it was a challenge, it wasn't one that was insurmountable. And I think that with the creativity and smarts of the business owners in this city, we can do it, and it shouldn't be seen that way. And then finally, I just want to say that I'm not here alone, I'm here on behalf of people in the kitchens that I work with, people that couldn't make it here and whose voices aren't heard. Someone mentioned it being as a public health issue, and I think that is fair, but it's also a racial justice issue and an equity issue, and this city suffers from some of the worst disparities there. So I encourage you as a council to think about those people in your city. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-two, and then speaker twenty-three is Stephanie Darrow. Speaker twenty-four is Peter Van Klinget. Speaker twenty-five is Rebecca Ellingsworth. And if those speakers could physically come...
My name is Chris Anderson. I own the Outback Steakhouse in Bloomington. I currently support what you're doing. I offer paid time off to all my employees. I think it's a great benefit. I think I recruit and retain top talent by doing that, but some of the details are concerning to me. I want it to work, I want you to come up with something that doesn't have adverse impact as far as tracking, and if my employee that's employed in Bloomington is working in Minneapolis, and how am I going to track that? And why am I, I offer paid time off, is that going to be grandfathered in, or is it going to, I mean, there's a lot of details, and many of the people that have spoken before me say that's where the focus needs to be on the details. I support what you're doing, I think it's right, everyone should have paid time off, but you got to make sure that the details work for all the different industries. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-three, and then if Speaker twenty-four, Speaker twenty-five, if any of those speakers are here, I'm asking you to please come forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is Stephanie Darrow. I am the Health and Education Outreach Coordinator at Gandhi Mahal Restaurant, as well as a resident of south Minneapolis. And I'm here on behalf of Gandhi Mahal Restaurant, supporting earned sick and safe time. Part of the reason that we support this is because we already offer it. I'm very, very fortunate to work at Gandhi, and our owner, Rahel Islam, treats us all there as family. And that's honestly what it's like working there, we are a giant family. And part of being a family is taking care of your other family members. And I'm very lucky to be able to say that, but I shouldn't be one of the few people in this room who can say that. Everyone in this room should be able to say that. The other reason I'd like to speak out in favor of this is that as the Health and Education Coordinator, and as a graduate student in medical humanities, I think it's incredibly important to remember that this isn't just an issue of equity, which it is. And it's not just an issue of doing the right thing, which it is. And it's not just an issue of good business, because taking care of your employees is good business. But this is also an issue of health and safety. Because working in food service, which I do and I have previously to working at Gandhi, you don't want ill employees coming to work. You don't want them interacting with customers. They not only put their fellow employees at risk, but they put customers at risk. And we've all seen that in this past year with the issues with Chipotle. Now, I have had to come to work sick before, not at this current job, but at previous jobs, because I couldn't stay home. I couldn't afford to lose that paycheck. And people shouldn't be put in that situation, and we shouldn't be putting our customers in that situation. So this is an issue that I think is incredibly important for us as individuals, for us as businesses, and for us as a community at home. So thank you very much for listening to me, and I hope that you vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Speaker twenty-four?
Hi, Matt.
You don't, you can just stand normally on the feet there, and it will pick you up just fine.
Yeah. My name is Theodore Van Connet. I live in Ward Seven, and I have a chronic health condition that's affected me for many years and has caused me a lot of trouble in my work environments, both as a substitute teacher in Cleveland and here when I was working for Jimmy John's as a bike delivery person. And so I would have to miss weeks of work at a time, every so, maybe about once a year when it got bad, and I had no security net from either of those places I worked. So I was, first of all, of course, didn't get paid for any time I missed, and second of all, suffered repercussions for time missed, was encouraged to come in to work sick. And this policy is so important because the, especially Jimmy John's, you know, they're not going to change because it benefits their workers, they're not going to change because of public health, because these are very profitable businesses, they can afford it, and all they really care about is making more money. So we need to, we need to make them do it, we need to act, because it's not going to change otherwise. So it's really important that you all pass this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker twenty-five, Rebecca Ellingsworth. And then after that, speaker twenty-six, Jason Raffey. Speaker twenty-seven, Julie Kearns. And speaker twenty-eight, I'm sorry, I can't read the names.
Hi. My name is Rebecca Ellingsworth Avila. I think I come on a different perspective perhaps than most people do. I am a single Mexican mother that came here when I was eight years old. I grew up with a single Mexican mother. I grew up very poor, taught myself through college, waitressing, and now I've earned the right to own a restaurant. I own Tinto Latino, and Cocina, excuse me, on the corner of Lake and Bryant. Oh, you like it, yay! So I commend what you're doing, I really do. I think everybody does, and I can't imagine, my employees are like my family. I don't have much family here, and I can tell you that I treat my servers, my staff, everyone, as if they're my brothers, my sisters. What I'm disappointed on is the way you've handled this. You've divided our community. I've met with many of your constituents in your very own wards that don't speak English but yet own businesses, that you never told about this. I helped them translate for them, you specifically, in Spanish. There's Somali communities, there's Mo'k communities that months after didn't know about this. I don't think anyone disagrees, at least I'll speak for myself, that people shouldn't be taken care of properly, that they shouldn't be treated like human beings. If someone is sick, I don't want them there. I want to take care of them like as if they're my family. What I'm disappointed in is that you've divided our community. We are one, I don't see this as a race issue, I don't see this as anything but a humanitarian issue, that we should stand up and treat people with common decency. I don't want a law telling me that I should have to do that. You are punishing the small businesses for the actions of large corporations here. I agree, I've seen it. I've worked my ass off since I was fifteen years old. I've been treated poorly. I know what large corporations can do, and they, the gentleman that just spoke, you're right, they don't care. They just want to make money. I just don't have the money, and if you can give me tools to implement this the way you want this implemented, I will do so. Perhaps we can get grants from you to cover some of the costs that I'm going to have to spend. I have a second job, I don't just own a restaurant, and that's how I pay for my son, my single, I'm a single mom, no one helps me with my son. So I get it, I grew up like this, but I would like help from you financially on implementing this, because I can't afford this right now. And I just started a restaurant a year and a half ago, maybe five years from now I can, and I promise you, I will do everything I can to implement it the way that you can, but to as companies of six or under that are part-time and full-time, I don't know how you're expecting people to not go out of business. That is the argument I have. I don't think anybody here, and if you do, if you think that your employees shouldn't be treated decently, you shouldn't be in business, period. So I don't think anyone disagrees with you. The disagreement is how you've handled it, and I will share with you, I'm very disappointed that you didn't translate documents. I don't see any translated documents here today. I don't see other ethnic communities being here...
And if you could start to wrap up...
Well, I'd like to be listened to, because you shut up my door pitching Bernie without even recognizing me after I've had a handful of conversations with you. It's disappointing you guys are not listening. Listen to your small businesses, because if you don't, we're going to end up being the land of ten thousand chains. Small business is what makes our economy thrive here. Please remember that. Please remember that.
Speaker twenty-six, Jason Raffey, then Speaker twenty-seven, Julie Kearns.
Hi, my name is Jason Raffey. I own a landscaping business in northeast Minneapolis called Field Outdoor Spaces. We started eleven years ago, and when we started the business, we thought that mostly we were going to hire transitional employees in their twenties. Well, now, we have twenty-five employees, most of them have stuck with us. Many of my employees have been with me for seven to eleven years, and cumulatively, we have seventeen kids. And so a lot of my perspective has changed as a business owner in the last eleven years. When the Working Family Agenda came out last November, my first reaction was kind of being attacked as a small business owner. As I started to think about it, and think about my business and who I wanted to be as a business owner, and how I wanted to support my employees, I realized that I could change some things. And one thing that we realized is that, so we're an eight-month business, so it's, you get this impulse to be like, man, we really got to get twelve months of work in in eight months. Realized that that doesn't really make any sense, because my employees still have to go home, you know, get the groceries, do all the things with their family. And so what we implemented is that everybody has to be out of the garage at six o'clock, it doesn't matter, we can get back to that tomorrow. And I think that the paid sick leave policy is another addition to that. I think that they work really hard, there's no difference between what they're doing and what salaried people are doing in terms of supporting their families, and I think they need the same support. So I really think that the paid sick leave policy should be passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Julie Kearns, then Speaker twenty-eight, then Speaker twenty-nine is Joanne Sodak. I apologize for names I can't read.
Thank you, Chair Glidden and council members.
If people could physically come forward, if your name is something twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, any of those speakers.
Great, thanks.
Sorry.
My name is Julie Kearns. I own Junket Tossed and Found. It is a micro-business in South Minneapolis. We have currently one full-time and six part-time employees, and I've been involved in this conversation since September, when it at first kind of hit with a bang the first time through. And after learning more about it, coming to understand so many of the details as relates to it, I realized that it was something that I wanted to implement on my own. And so in January, as a micro-business, as a bootstrapped business, as a business that had just been through seven months of road construction on Minnehaha Avenue, I implemented it retroactively for my team, full-time and part-time, and that has been no issue. I just need to speak to the fact that all of the fear that's happening here is, I just think it's unfounded, and it's been a pretty simple thing to ask my accountant to accrue PTO, basically, at the rate that the original recommendation had stated. And we've had one person take one day, she's eighteen years old, she got kicked out of her house about six months ago, and she was sick. She needed the money, and I'm really glad that we provided that. And at the end of the day, I have a lot more power as a business owner to make change, and to make changes in order to bring in more funds than my employees do. And I think we owe it to them to recognize that power dynamic and take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Speaker twenty-eight, is Speaker twenty-eight here? Okay, and I'm going to ask other speakers to get in line, so if you could just hang on, I'm going to ask Speaker twenty-nine, Speaker thirty, Speaker thirty-one, if you can physically just start moving yourselves up here. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is LaBerta Porter, and I'm a resident of South Minneapolis. I worked with the temp service with Food Specialty. I had only worked there for two weeks, and I started to feel sick on the job, so I had to leave the job half a day because I felt sick. I had asked to get the next day off with the temp service, instead I got fired. I was on a ninety-day probationary period, and I talked to the company that I was, the agency that I was working for, and I did complain, but they couldn't do anything about it. So then I had to go around to other temp services, and it took me like two months to find a job. I'm also a student too, at the same time, and I really support the paid sick time off, because I feel like it's important to not myself, but also the community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Speaker twenty-nine, and Speaker thirty is Lovar Stewart. Speaker thirty-one, Pasqual Tapia. Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon, my name is Joanne Campbell Sodak.
Thank you.
I live in the Village of St. Anthony. I am retired school nurse from the Osseo District, and I have listened to all of the statements from all the speakers, and each one of them have valid, they have valid questions and they're valid concerns. But what I would like to do is talk to you in a few minutes about sick and save time for the working poor parents who have children in school from K through six. As a school nurse, it's eight-thirty in the morning, I get a call on the PA, there's a child on the bus who's ill. I get my gloves, I get the wheelchair, I go out to the bus, and the kid has thrown up. Bring the kid into the health office, get him cleaned up, and I ask him what happened. Well, my mom told me not to tell anybody that I threw up at home, because if I stay home, she doesn't get paid if she stays home with me. This is the reality that has happened over and over again, not only in the city of Minneapolis, it's happening all around the country. Working poor parents don't have a choice. They either go to work and send their child to school sick, or they stay home and don't get paid. It's not a choice. They need to get paid. So I, along with my group, Halkum, Persons of Color Union members, we are in support of the sick and save time. It is an ethical issue, it's a humanitarian issue, and I don't think there's any person in this room who hasn't been sick and had the opportunity to stay at home with their children. I think all parents deserve to stay home with their sick children. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty.
Hello, my name is Lovar Stewart. I want, I, first of all, empathize with the very small business owners that have problem, that this will present problems to, and of course, business owners should, they should not have to be forced into doing what is right and what is fair and et cetera, and but we've come to this because of companies like Enron, WorldCom, et cetera. So private sector argument is, of course, you know, we should leave it up to the private sector. Well, that doesn't always work out so great. So I read the Senate File 481 and the House File 549, and the way I read it, there's enough room in there to, there's enough in there for everybody. But I just want to share a quick story. I work for a company, we have about a thousand employees, et cetera, et cetera. I get a nice fair wage. Right now, I get five weeks of vacation and three personal days, and I drive the kind of car I want, okay? And not only when I go on vacation, I can spend money on vacation, I'm doing just fine. My CEO, which gets an eight-figure income, is doing fine also. We are very competitive in the market, okay? We're pushed very hard, we have deadlines to meet, we deliver things, et cetera, and we have a ninety-nine point six delivery on-time rate, so we're doing just fine, and it's not, it doesn't have to be an either-or, okay? And we don't have to use fear tactics to say that this is unfair and et cetera, et cetera, so. And I'm a single parent, and there's been days that my son has been sick, and I've had that time off, okay? And I raised my son by myself, and so I'm doing just great. I drive the kind of car I want, et cetera, et cetera. So, and I'm here just to help others that, you know, that should get the same kind of salary and care and integrity that my company shows me, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-one.
Muy buenas tardes, todos. Yo me llamo Pasqual Tapia Vega, vivo al sur de Minneapolis, y vengo a seguir mi historia.
So, good afternoon, everyone, thanks for letting me speak here. My name is Pasqual Tapia Vega, and I live in South Minneapolis.
Yo soy trabajador de la compañía de Prestige. Trabajo en la tienda de taras del downtown, limpiando taras.
I'm a janitor, and I clean the target in downtown Minneapolis for a company called Prestige.
Pues yo estoy acá, gracias por darnos la oportunidad de estar acá. Pues como trabajador, estado, este, apoye, que nos apoyen en los días de enfermedad pagados. Pues yo hace cuantos años me enfermé de la espalda y pedí la compañía que me diera permiso, me dio permiso, pero no me pagó los días que tuve de días pagados.
So, thanks again for the opportunity to be here. I'm asking you all to support us as workers. A few years ago, I had an incident where I had to take time off because I had a back injury, and I missed two days of work, but it was not paid for them.
Tengo dos hijos enfermos en México, y por capa de eso, no les pude ayudar. Uno está enfermo del corazón, y otro tiene ausencia renal, por eso escasamente no puedo apoyar. Muchas gracias.
So, I have two children who are sick in Mexico, and when I miss work and my check is short, I can't send money home to my family. One of my children suffers from a chronic heart condition, and the other one has kidney failure. So on occasions when I'm not able to work, I can't send money home, so it's either me or them. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker thirty-two is Stephen Suffrage. Speaker thirty-three is Joanne Sodak. Speaker thirty-four is Ryan Kennedy. And Speaker thirty-five is Chelsea Globitz. If people can physically get ready to come forward. Thank you.
Thank you, all the people that are here today. My name is Stephen Suffrage, I work for the Two Ten East Lake Street McDonald's. I've been there for two years. Now, I stand before you as a sort of a miracle, because God has blessed me to come out of being addicted to these crack cocaine and marijuana in my life. I'd like to say with that, that now that they have put me on certain medicines and stuff like this to control me, I support this bill that we have here today, because some of us, even though we go through mental, you might not be in my shoes, and I might not be in your shoes. We might get the different pair of shoes, but we still want to buy name brand, you know, so we could fit in. But all I really would have to say about this is that I believe that we, we as a people have let each other down, you know, we are not helping one another, that we are making these statues and things that would cause us to fail. I mean, and it never seems like what you do is enough, and it's kind of like being bonded, you know? I think even though we have our differences, that this should work for everybody. This proposal should work for everybody, rich, poor, middle, in-between classes, and stuff like that. I just would like to thank you all for giving us an opportunity to put this on the table. But I also have one quick thing to say. It's kind of like back in the day when there was slavery, they'd have the house person, and then they had the field person. And see, the field person didn't get what the house person was getting, because the house person did the things for the house. But I think they should, we should still be set free from this and be able to work with each other to be on the same level, because that would benefit me and everybody here, I think.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-three.
Hi, my name is Mara Gunter.
So I had a different speaker for thirty-three?
I switched, my individual number was sixty-one, but due to time, we switched.
Okay, is Speaker thirty-three going to come back?
Yes, Speaker thirty-three now.
Okay, and that was Speaker, you were Speaker sixty-one. Okay, all right.
My name is Mara Gunter. I'm here to share my story, but I'm also here with a room full of people that are also in support. I live and work in Minneapolis, and at nineteen, I was diagnosed with epilepsy. I'm really proud to say that I've overcome a lot. It's been really hard, but I now have two jobs, and I'm like really looking forward to going back to school in the fall, and I'm, sorry, and I'm, you know, able to support myself. And when I do go to work, both my jobs, I give a hundred percent, but I may not be able to come into work. My condition is really sudden, I don't always know when it's coming, and I'm not, it's out of my control. And so when I don't come to work, it's really hard for me to not have paid sick days, because it prevents me from furthering, you know, being able to take care of myself. I think, you know, on a normal day, I believe that I'm just like everyone else, and I've been seizure-free for two months, but I'm always worried that my condition will prevent me from attending work and making my living. So I'm in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-four is Ryan Kennedy. Speaker thirty-five is Chelsea Globitz, and I'm going to ask people to physically get ready. Speaker thirty-six is Chris Fleck. Go ahead, thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ryan Kennedy, I live at fourteen sixteen Third Street Northeast, Ward Three, and I'm the Executive Director of the Minnesota Public Interest Research Group, or M-Perg. M-Perg is a nonpartisan organization that's been around since nineteen seventy-one, engaging young people and students in issues like this. I'd like to say first, as someone who manages nonprofit, staff of twenty-three, twenty-one of whom work here in Minneapolis, this is the right thing to do. We've been, we've been doing paid sick time for a number of years. When this conversation started, we brought our part-time employees on board with our policy as well, and whether it's, you know, a half percent of our wages, or one percent, or one and a half percent on a given month, and it will vary, that's the cost of doing business, and that's the cost of taking care of your employees and making sure that we as an employer in this city are doing right by the folks that are doing the work for us. So I'd like to say that first, and I'd also like to add on, in terms of young people looking for employment, finding some employment in the city, being underemployed, I'm not sure if you all know, youth unemployment's about two and a half to three times the regular unemployment rate here in Minneapolis, and a lot of those that are employed, nearly half are part-time workers, only half part-time employment. And I'd just like to say that when young people actually try to stand up and work with their businesses, they get shut down. When they try to say, hey, we should revise our policy, when they try to go other avenues and say, we're going to take this a business-by-business approach, you see things happen like the Jimmy John's workers, who were fired, who now it has been, the courts have ruled illegally fired, because they were protesting for paid sick time, but not every person can take that to court. Not every young person can stand up, can ask for paid sick time at their job while risking losing their employment and having to fight out long, drawn-out court battles in order to get the justice that they deserve. There's really a culture of fear and a culture of intimidation in terms of not have, I mean, in some of it's a lack of skills, and some of it's a lack of leverage in these situations, but we need the city council to stand up and do what's right for these workers, because a lot of times, they're not able to do what's right for themselves in their own employment. So thank you.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-five, Speaker thirty-six is Chris Fleck. Speaker thirty-seven is Angela Bolden, and Speaker thirty-eight is Kate Davenport. If people can please start getting ready.
Thank you, Vice President Glidden, and President Johnson, and the council members here today. My name is Chelsea Globitz, sixteen forty-seven LeFond Avenue, St. Paul. I am the President of the Minneapolis Regional Labor Federation, AFL-CIO. We represent all of the unions and their families in the Western Metro. We have over seventy thousand members as a part of our organization, and over twenty thousand union members live in the city of Minneapolis. In addition to that, many of our members work in this community. As an appointed member of the Workplace Partnership Group, I strongly support the ordinance before you today, and I really appreciate the negotiations and the time that went into it from the community, from business owners. This was true negotiations, and I really appreciated the accommodation and stories that we heard throughout this process. I also appreciate the structure that was set up to create these recommendations and this ordinance. You know, we've been talking a lot in our labor movement about the changing nature of work. Technology is advancing, the gig economy is in motion, and our demographics are quickly changing, including here in Minneapolis. You can tell by just looking around you. As we look forward to work in the twenty-first century, we want to embrace this, and we are going to embrace it, just as the employers throughout the city are embracing this. So as we embrace these changes, we have to make sure that we're not doing it at the expense of minimum worker standards as these changes occur. All workers need to live with dignity and respect in our communities and in our cities. So So not only do we have these major economic forces changing, we also have some of the racial, the worst racial disparity gaps, including in health and income and wealth and every indicator of life in our communities. So this policy alone isn't going to fix that, um, but it's a small step forward in maintaining minimum standards in the face of our changing economies and the change in our demographics. It shows that workers have a voice in this community. And to be clear, Minneapolis is not an island. St. Paul will be passing their version of this policy. We have worker committees in Bloomington, Brooklyn Park, St. Louis Park, working with their, um, city electeds and, um, Chicago is even going to be passing their Earn Sick Time policy this summer. So I applaud the very local process that was taken here and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Chris Fleck. And then our next speaker's thirty-seven is Angela Bolden, thirty-eight is Kate Davenport, and thirty-nine is Stephanie Gasko. Uh, speaker forty is Rashida Credit. And if those speakers could start getting ready, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Fleck. I am Director of Business Relations with North Central University here in downtown Minneapolis. I also serve as a volunteer on the East Downtown Council Board and a volunteer on the Minneapolis Downtown Council Development Committee, championing our twenty-twenty-five plan to grow downtown Minneapolis. I'd like to read a brief statement. Esteemed council members and city council, I'm here today representing North Central University, a nonprofit university in Easttown and Elliott Park areas of downtown Minneapolis. We are concerned that the proposed policy to require employers to offer sick, safe leave will provide an administrative and financial burden to be determined, uh, to the health of our educational institution. The U.S. Department of Labor this week released specific standards as it relates to guidance for higher education paying overtime under the Federal Labor Standards Act. Since the federal government has recognized the need for different policy for higher education in employment law, you may agree that the unique situation in higher education warrants a separate look to broadly or applied policy such as what you are proposing with the Minneapolis Sick Pay and Safe Time Ordinance. North Central University already has a, uh, in place a discre- discretionary leave policy for our staff that meets or exceeds the requirements of the proposed ordinance. Under our current system, part-time student workers, if they're ill, for work shift are excused without penalty and can make up their work time in a different timeframe, thus there's no loss of income. Here's what we're asking. We're asking for your consideration, a professional exemption from the proposed ordinance for our university and perhaps other higher education institutions in the Minneapolis city limits, specifically in regards to the policy's application of student workers and adjunct faculty. Despite the ever-increasing cost of higher education, North Central University reigns one of the most affordable private education options in the state and we wish to continue to make affordability a priority for our students. Thank you for your consideration in entertaining higher education or at least, thank you for your consideration in exempting higher education or at least, uh, extending the implementation timeframe of this policy so that added research can be done. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Speaker thirty-seven is Angela Bolden. I'm going to keep reading until I see someone who's here. Speaker thirty-eight, Kate Davenport. Speaker thirty-nine, if you could come and get ready to speak, Stephanie Gasko. Speaker forty, Rashida Credit. Thank you, everyone. You can come forward a little.
Thank you, Chairwoman and Council. My name is Kate Davenport and I'm here representing Eureka Recycling. We're a nonprofit social enterprise based in Minneapolis with a mission focused on zero waste and we strongly support the ordinance for Earn Sick and Safe Time in the city of Minneapolis. Although we are a five oh one C three organization, our two main demonstrations are financially self-sustaining. We operate a material recovery facility where recycling is sorted and a fleet of recycling collection trucks and we were recently awarded the recycling contract for the city of Minneapolis Residential Recycling. All in all, we employ over eighty people who are paid living wage benefits with, which is a practice that is far from normal in the recycling industry. Zero Waste is often characterized as an environmental movement focused on valuing resources. But at Eureka, it also calls us to value the people that are doing this difficult and critical work every day that provides us so much benefit for our community and builds our local economy. We are committed to taking care of our employees for the best, to the best of our ability. While the benefits of creating safe, secure and healthy jobs undoubtedly helps everyone, we are competing in the marketplace where most of our competitors do not provide the same level of wages and benefits that we do. This ordinance would create a structure that would support small local businesses like ours in providing reasonable and compassionate care for our employees without putting us at a competitive disadvantage. We definitely understand the challenges that employers face in a very competitive market and in unpredictable economic times that we are in. However, all of us are employees, whether we're salaried or hourly, and all of us face the same challenges within our households, a child getting sick or our own health. Providing sick and safe time is manageable for businesses like us and we believe it pays for itself in employee retention, morale and productivity. And I'll just state again that in the recycling industry, um, most, most of the industry has pretty low-paid workers that do not provide Earn Sick and Safe Time with extremely high turnover. We have almost no turnover at Eureka and this is because of the benefits that we provide in terms of living wage and Earn Sick and Safe Time. And I think that has a business benefit and we are definitely here to help other businesses figure out how to incorporate this into their business practices. Um, so thank you for listening and I, um, really support the council in passing this.
Thank you. Speaker thirty-nine, Stephanie Gasko, and speaker forty, Rashida Credit.
Good afternoon. My name is Stephanie Gasko. Um, and I wear many different hats, um, as the person that I am. Growing up as a little girl, um, my parents did not have access to Earn Sick and Safe Time or any benefits for that matter. Um, my mom's main care came from emergency room visits where her stomach pains would get just too, so bad to the point that we would have to call an ambulance to come and get her because she did not have the, the benefits that she needed to be able to take time off of work and take care of herself. My mom is still dealing with those health issues twenty years later because she wasn't able to care for herself. As a mother, I send my kids to school. I'm lucky enough to work at an organization where I have the access to Earn Sick and Safe Time. There's a lot of kids in my daughter's classroom whose parents don't have that same access. They don't have that same benefit. So unfortunately, these little kids are going to school sick day in and day out because their parents have to choose in between paying the bills or staying home with their sick kid. As an organizer, working, organizing fast food workers all across the city of Minneapolis, I work with folks day in and day out who have to choose in between staying home and getting healthy or keeping their kids home when they're sick and having to go to work to make sure that they can pay the bills because one illness can make or break a family and this has been going on for decades. And we have some of the worst racial disparities in the nation here in the city of Minneapolis. This is not going to fix everything, but it's definitely a step in the right direction. Too many people continue to have to choose in between work and their health and that's unacceptable, especially when the people that we're trying to protect here don't have the voice that they deserve when these policies are being made. I was also on the committee for Earn Sick and Safe Time as the only woman of color, speaking up for many women who I work with on a regular basis. And we need Earn Sick and Safe Time and we need it now. We need to ensure that it is strongly enforced and we need to make sure that the workers, the people who are most impacted by not having this policy, continue to have a voice when it comes to enforcing this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker, uh, forty, Rashida Credit. I want to just say, speaker forty-one and forty-two, I believe, already signed up and spoke as Speakers One and Two. They were Madeline Gardner and Charlotte, um, Zabawa. Speaker forty-three, Don Prentice. Speaker forty-four, Chase Elliott. Speaker forty-five, Hassan Hassan. If people have any of those numbers after thirty-nine, come forward or if there was something else that happened that I don't know about on the signup list. All right, thank you so much. Thanks for waiting.
Hello, my name is Rashida Credit and, um, I stay in North Minneapolis and I used to be a PCA worker and, um, I have a daughter right here. Um, she was born with a terminal, uh, lung disease called RSVP and by not having sick and safe pay time, when I took off to take care of my baby, which was approximately about two and a half weeks, uh, because it's contagious with children under two and I have actually five children, so I had to actually take her away from my other children to care for her so they wouldn't get sick. And I was actually fired from my job and not able to support me and my family because, you know, I had to take off for my daughter having, um, a terminal disease. And, you know, with not being able to take off and be able to pay my rent and stuff, me and my family got evicted from our place. We had to go into the shelter and now I'm still, you know, having a problem finding another job with being a PCA because I still have this problem with my daughter. Whenever she gets sick, I'm going to have to take off and I'm not going to be able to be paid for that, so I can't get back into the health field because I have a terminal ill daughter that can't be provided for by not having paid sick and safe time. So I think it's very important that we get paid sick and safe time for kids, for our children that has terminal disease, for old elderly people that, you know, grand people, we probably take care of. It's desperately needed. Thank you guys.
Thank you. Is there a speaker forty-one? Okay, and if you could just give us our name and then go and sign up with the clerk so that we make sure we have all your name for the public record.
Okay, cool. Sounds good. Um, hi, my name's Candace Montgomery. Um, I wasn't going to speak today, but then, um, I heard some concerning things about potential amendments and I wanted to just clarify some things on the behalf of the kiddos out there. So I'm a kid of a casual worker. I'm a kid of a low-wage worker. I'm a kid of a restaurant and a retail worker. Um, and I'm a kid of a laborer. My mom worked twelve to sixteen hour days to keep a roof, roof over our head. Because she had to work even when she was sick, she ended up stressing herself out so much that her, her internal organs started to erode and eat themselves. That's what happens when people have to worry about how they're going to pay their bills while also going to work, on top of making sure that their kids get fed, on top of making sure that whatever random function that the schools want you to go to, you go to, right? Um, that's what actually happens. These are real-life consequences of the policies that you're passing today or you're talking about today. Um, this resulted in our family going into a, a major, uh, financial crisis and our home going into foreclosure, adding more stress. Um, and so I just want to clarify that casual workers don't just decide to be casual workers because it's convenient. Casual workers are oftentimes casual workers because they get paid so little anyways that they can't afford to pay for childcare. Casual workers oftentimes have, need that flexible, flexible schedule so that they can work twelve AM till six AM while their kids are sleeping. That's what a casual worker does. It's not because of a snazzy schedule. And I just wanted to really clarify that for the city council, um, because my mom was a childcare, I mean, a casual worker. Um, and I just want to end by saying that I hope that you are listening to the people who are struggling. There are a lot of different opinions who, um, came to this mic today. And I hope that you listen to the folks who are struggling even more than me. Right? Because, and I also want you to look at who they are. Right? They're black and brown folks primarily. This is a race issue. You've seen it racially represented right in front of you today. Right? Um, and to be real, they don't look like most of y'all. Shout out to the council members of color. Make sure you make the right decision too.
And if you could wrap up your comments?
Um, but, you know, they're black and their lives matter, their health matters, their dignity matters. They are brown and they're providing for their families here and overseas. There are refugees who are just seeking dignity. Those are the folks that I just want you to look at instead of the facts and the numbers.
Um, okay.
What's that? Absolutely. Thank you.
You will have your opportunity. And if you could wrap up, please?
Absolutely. So I just hope that you, you're looking at the, what really matters. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, is there a speaker forty-two? Okay, and then I'm going to ask you two to say your name and then if you could please make sure that you are fully signed up with the clerk because we had somebody else listed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, good afternoon, council members. My name is Nikki Mayberry. I live, uh, in the Powderhorn neighborhood in Ward Nine. Council members, uh, I come to you as, uh, someone from rural Wisconsin that sought opportunity, uh, in Minneapolis. I moved to Minneapolis ten years ago and made my home because I believe that Minneapolis is a great city of opportunity. Uh, I come from rural Wisconsin and a mother who is the most brilliant, hard-working, creative person I know. Uh, growing up, my mother worked two jobs. Uh, she was a casual worker, uh, and also cared for vulnerable adults. Uh, she was a full-time nursing student at night with honors. She cared for my terminally ill, uh, grandmother, uh, who passed away of cancer. By the time I was seven years old, I knew how to give a nebulizer treatment and checked my sister's oxygen levels because while I was born healthy and fairly carefree, my younger sister, Sadafi, struggled with chronic asthma every day of her life. Many, many nights, my little family huddled together in the emergency room and watched my sister struggle for her life. And many, many mornings after that struggle, we got up, my mother, my sister and I. And my mother went to work caring for other vulnerable adults and my grandmother. I went to school, having done my homework in many, many waiting rooms. This isn't the kind of life that we want for people in Minneapolis. This isn't the kind of life that the people that elected you sent you to give them. Right? So I know every day you make decisions with a great deal of compassion. You make decisions grounded in a great deal of truth and you deal with a lot of complexities. What's real is that we've had this debate for a year and a half and Minneapolis can't wait. I'm asking you to do the right thing and pass Earn Sick and Safe Time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-three, Dan Prentice. Speaker forty-four is Chase Elliott. Speaker forty-five is Hassan Hassan. Speaker forty-six is Frank Brown.
I'm Dan Prentice. I work in the food service industry and I've also spent ten years working as a caregiver. In those fields, people work, uh, long hours under strenuous circumstances a lot and people come to work sick, uh, for various reasons. And I don't think this ordinance will completely eliminate that, but it sure as hell will help. And so as a matter of public health, uh, I'm supporting this ordinance and also as a matter of social justice and equity. But, thanks.
Thank you. Speaker forty-four, Chase Elliott. Speaker forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven could also probably get in line.
Hey, I just want to, um, everybody here, thanks for listening. My name is Chase Elliott. I'm a North Side resident. I'm from Philadelphia. Um, I just want to give a story about, I've been working at Target Center, the Timberwolves Arena for about five years. Um, one day I got injured going home from work for a mistaken identity from the Minneapolis Police Department. I'm left-handed. They broke my left hand thinking I was somebody else. Then when they found out I wasn't, they let me go and told me to go home. Now I had to go through surgery. I went to surgery alone, woke up alone without my family being there because they didn't have Earn Sick and Sick Time to be in the hospital with me. Now after that, I went straight to work. I have kids I take care of. I could be in the streets, but I choose to take care of my family and have a job and do what I'm supposed to do in life. So I went straight to work. I had multiple supervisors that supervised me. Some of them told me I couldn't take off because my doctor even said I should be at home resting. But, um, because of my family, I stayed at work and worked my butt off. And then when my, um, pain started getting unbearable, one of my supervisors had seen it and it was like, you know what, go home and relax for three days and, um, come back to work and if anything, we'll talk about some more stuff. I took them three days off. When I came back to work, other supervisors that didn't want me to go home was mad and ended up firing me after five years. Never had an issue at the job, not to mention I was, I was, um, in the union. Never spoke to nobody. Nobody ever talked to me about nothing. They all let me get fired. Now, um, Earn Sick and Sick Time is well-deserved because it's a health issue. Not only do people get sick, people get injured unexpectedly. There's police officers killing people right now and their family can't even take off to go to funerals. They don't have the money to support the funeral. And, um, we are here asking you guys, who most of y'all don't go through what we go through, to understand that because if you work in the United States, you deserve Earn Sick Time. So if you, if you're telling us that, not just us as people, but So if you, if you're telling us that, not just us as people, but everybody, if you're saying that we don't deserve Earn Sick Tick Time, then I don't know what to say. But employees, employers help businesses. And if businesses feel like workers don't deserve that, then they don't, then they're not supposed to be business owners. Because now without the employers, there wouldn't be a business. I'm gonna make it fast, but I am a parent, I do have responsibilities and I work hard to take care of my responsibilities. And now, because I'm a part of this, Not Neighborhood Organizer for Change, I talk to fellow friends that I grew up with, telling them to hang in there and still try to find jobs. A lot of them feel like they're not gonna get jobs because of how they look. A lot of them feel like they're not gonna get jobs because they're black. A lot of them feel like they're not gonna get jobs because they live in north Minneapolis. So as a Northside organizer, I strongly talk to them and tell them to hang in there. I don't know if you guys go through what anybody else go through, but I know you have sick family members.
And if you could wrap up there.
Yeah, you have sick kids and also you've witnessed other people get injured. And I'm just asking that you guys understand that and go ahead with it. And I also appreciate the small business owners that's trying to go ahead with this too. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker forty-five, Hassan Hassan. Speaker forty-six is Frank Brown. Speaker forty-seven is Arcoil Bordeo. Speaker forty-eight, Eli Adelson.
Hello, good evening, good afternoon, councilmembers. I am here today to testify and favor this ordinance. My name is Hassan and my last name is Hassan also. So I live at sixteen oh one Fourth Street South. That's in Ward six. Councilmember of the or some is representative. I come here today is to speak about works of basic in time. I currently work at Autozone where I had to drop my hours to one day, five hours. Reason is because I couldn't be able to get enough time and they put me at twelve, twelve point at this current timing right now, which is basically if I miss one more day, I'm gonna lose my job. So, and the reason that happened is because days that I get sick with cold and anything and I don't wanna go to work or actually go to the doctor, I won't be able to get that passed or I don't get that, saying, okay, well, you're not gonna get a point for this. Not only that I'm not getting paid for it, I'm also getting a point where I'm very close to getting fired. And I'm thinking to myself here, my value as an employee is not, is not worth it right now. It's not where it's supposed to be. Because I'm, I'm working over fifteen, fifteen hundred hours for the past three to four months and I can't get anything. I can't get no sick time or nothing. On top of that, I'm actually getting a point. And I haven't even, doctor knows I have, I have everything. And all I just wanted to say is that I'm here as a person and I wanted to see if you guys are interested to support this and I respectfully ask you guys to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Frank Brown, number forty-six. Then after that, forty-seven is Arcoil Bordeo. Forty-eight, Eli Adelson Stein. Speaker forty-nine is Gabriella Farns. And I apologize for anyone that I mispronounced her name.
My name is Frank Brown. I'm a leader with Take Action Minnesota, Main Street Alliance, Isaiah, Jewish Community Action and NOC. I'm also a member of the Broadway Business Association, also a member of Uptown Association. And I'm a business owner. I own Minuteman Press in Uptown. So, you know, I find this, I find this issue, you know, somewhat conflicting. Because as a business owner, you know, I wanna maximize my wealth. But as a progressive leader in our community, I wanna make sure that I'm leading on the right things. So I run my business very ethically. And I've heard these stories and everybody that this ordinance affects and can help has spoken, has spoken for this ordinance. It's earned sick and safe time. So these people are actually earning this sick and safe time. It's not given to them, they're earning it. I listened to some of the other business people, they talk about tracking, you know, record, you know, tracking records and all that. Well, you know what? I'm glad we got computers. It makes it so much easier to track these records. It's not a heavy burden. I'm thinking about opening up another shop on St., in St. Paul or in one of the suburbs. All I need is another column and I just record those hours. Pretty simple. I heard other people say that this is gonna hurt the people that this is designed to help. Well, it's funny that all the, all the people that this is designed to help are speaking for this ordinance. So I don't think it's gonna hurt them. And also, you know, some people talk about treating people differently in different areas. Well, you know, Target Corporation, when we banned the box in the state of Minnesota, banned the box throughout the whole country. Why can't, why can't companies do the same? So when it comes down to ethics and business ethics, which may be an oxymoron to some, but I think it's a reality. I think we can make do past this ordinance and we as business owners can figure it out. If we have to increase our sales, whatever we have to do to make it work for our businesses. Because you know what? We wanna survive. So we will figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-seven? Then forty-eight?
I was actually Speaker seventy-three, but she left, so she gave me her ticket.
Arcoil Bordeo?
My name is Will Moore.
Okay, so you are Speaker seventy-three?
Yes.
And I must not have that sheet, so you might wanna just double check you're signed. Okay. Go ahead.
All right, like I mentioned before, my name is Will Moore. I'm speaking on the behalf of fast food workers and single parents. I was currently, a couple of years back, working at Buffalo Wild Wings and Benihanas. And also I was a single father, three at the time. And I called in to work because my daughter was sick. And at the time, I didn't have any family support or, you know, I was being a good parent. I wasn't gonna send my child to work or to school sick. And, you know, people are affected not having this opportunity because, you know, we don't have support all the time. We don't have family support all the time. We don't have, you know, daycare support all the time, especially when it's expensive. And watching my mom growing up as an oldest child and having to step up when, you know, she goes to work eight years old at home with my brother and sister alone, you know, while my mom worked at McDonald's and slaved for them and, you know, come back home and get fired because I go to the hospital because I was too little or whatnot. So they sent me to the hospital and my mom ended up losing her job because she had to take off work to take care of me. So we've been being affected by this since nineteen something, nineteen nineties, you know? So I just, I'm very in favor of this and I believe you guys should really pass this bill.
Thank you. And is, is Mr. Moore all signed up so he doesn't have anything more to do?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to check that. Speaker forty-eight? Okay, and what was your original number, please?
I think it was twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay. And then after that, Speaker forty-nine. Speaker fifty, Emma Shankland. Speaker fifty-one is Kieran Knutson. And if, can any of those speakers get ready? Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. My name is Matt Bartholomew, I'm in Ward ten. I just came here, I'm gonna try to keep it short, but I worked, I used to work at Common Roots, which does offer paid sick time. And I just wanna say, as an employee of Common Roots, I really valued that. And I know I've heard the, the story that folks are gonna abuse it, but I waited because I knew I would need that someday. Or I knew, I, you know, I hope I wouldn't need it someday, but I, but I waited. And because I waited, I had back problems and I was able to take time off. And I was able to heal. If I wasn't able to do that at that time, I don't know if I would have been able to pay rent. And so this whole, this whole issue of people abusing it, it really isn't a deal. I talked to my fellow employees about that and everyone was very respectful of it. But I also, throughout the past few months, I've spoken with a lot of servers, back of house folks, managers, owners of restaurants. Because I was doing some organizing for NOC. And people are overwhelmingly in favor of this. People need it. A lot of the people could not show up to the hearings. A lot of the people couldn't show up here because they're working. And I think that's a legit thing that hopefully you'll be getting emails and I really hope that you pay attention to those emails because they weren't able to be here, they weren't able to voice their, their opinion. And I just wanna say, there's a lot of talk about just talking about racial equity and policy that, you know, just doing like studies and stuff like this. This is an actual opportunity to have a racially equitable policy and to bring it to the city. And I don't see why you would pass up on this. So I really encourage you to pass it as was recommended by the work group. That took thousands of volunteer hours to make.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Speaker forty-nine, is there a Speaker forty-nine? And did you, what was your original number?
My original number was eighty-three.
Okay. Eighty, eighty-three?
Madam Chair, his original number was number four, this is Guillermo Lindsay.
Number four, here we are. Okay. All right. And if you might, go ahead and just let us know your name and Guillermo.
My name is Guillermo Lindsay, I'm a fast food worker for McDonald's. Also, I was selected to be part of the Workers Partnership Group for Paid Sick Leave. With that being said, I support this movement, this proposal to you guys because I'm a fast food worker. I've been a fast worker fourteen years. And with that, two years ago, I was forced to walk into work sick with flu-like symptoms. And with that being said, I got my coworkers sick as well. With that, it's either risk a day at work and me getting fired or force myself to go to work and get, get everybody else sick. For that, I chose to do that because me getting fired, I couldn't pay my bills if I got fired, you know? I urge you guys, Miss Alondra, I don't wanna say your last name because it was butchered, and Mr. Fry, you know me. I'd like to tell you guys that I urge you guys to pass this proposal because not only it would uplift the low poverty class, but it will uplift everybody. You know, like we're not just fighting to live, we're fighting to survive. And with that, who are we if we can't take care of our children the respectful way and the healthy way? You know? And with that, that's why, you know, our vice and chair and also Ms. Noria and Ron, you know, a couple of my colleagues, we came up with this proposal to let you guys know that's why we, we doing this. Because with this, we can be so much better of a Minnesota and let alone Minneapolis, you know? And that's why I came here to tell you guys today that I urge you guys to please pass this today, not tomorrow, not after breakfast, not before lunch, now. So, once again, my name is Guillermo Lindsay. Also, I'm an organizer for Sintool, along with ally with NOC, Neighbors Organizer for Change and Working Day America. So, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty is Emma Shankland. Speaker fifty-one is Kieran Knutson. Speaker fifty-two is Lena Goldie. Speaker fifty-three, Mr. Stanek. So if people can physically line up and, and get ready, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Emma Shankland. I live at twenty-four twenty-four Grand Avenue South, Ward ten. I've worked in the restaurant industry for the past six years. And over those six years, it's been a variety of part-time or full-time, been in school and out of school. But I've also suffered through a lot of major chronic health problems. I've suffered from depression, anxiety, I'm recovered from an eating disorder and I have chronic migraines. I've suffered with migraines for my entire life and I wanna tell you a story about a couple of years ago when I first started having them again. I was working at a restaurant, it was August, so I was in between school and I was trying to save up money so I didn't have to work all the time during school. I still worked part-time, but I didn't wanna, you know, have to fight too much with the work and school balance. I started getting migraines every day, multiple times a day, during shifts, before shifts or after shifts. It got to the point where in the middle of shifts, I would have to go to the break room and give myself Imetrek shots and hide in the break room until I could open my eyes again. I didn't have the option not to go to work. I got as many shifts covered as I could. But the reality of restaurants is that most people are maxed out. They're doing, they're in school or they're in multiple jobs or they have children and other obligations. And while it is flexible and it's good for those people, it's hard to pick up a shift two hours before a shift when you get sick. It just doesn't work out all the time. So I did get shifts covered if I could, but I also had to pay for school. I had to pay for medical bills for being sick. And if I left work, I couldn't pay for rent. So I had to make the choice. Either am I gonna go home and get rest or am I gonna go to work, pay for my bills and be able to pay to maybe not be sick longer? It's kind of a catch 22 because you just get in a cycle of extending your sickness or being able to afford the care and the bills you need.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-one? Okay. And what was your original number?
My original number was seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. And I do see here, I just wanna make sure everybody's signed up. I want you to introduce yourself and then we'll take your testimony.
My name is Rod Adams. My address is eighteen eleven Fourteenth Avenue South, Ward six. And I'm here and I'm here to speak positively about the proposal. About a, about a year ago, year and a half ago, I was a, I worked in a restaurant. While working in this restaurant, I was, I was a cook, I was a prep cook. I, I got ready, all the vegetables and meat. So I sliced a lot of things. While slicing a piece of meat, I, I basically sliced off a small chunk of my thumb. And it bled profusely. There was not, there was not like a protocol to do something after I sliced my thumb. So when I went to my manager, he told me, just put some gauze on it, some Band-Aids and get back to work and finish your shift. And you know what I did? I did just that. The reason I did that is because I didn't, I didn't have any power over my employer. I didn't, I myself felt powerless. Basically, the, the dynamics of the situation left me basically feeling powerless. Left, left me feeling like my voice, my mental strength, my physical pain did not matter. I felt like my body was owned by my employer. I was almost sure that my body was only an instrument to drive profits. Four hundred years later and I was still a slave. And you might not know why I and other workers continue to work through pain and sickness, so I'm gonna tell you. I worked because as a restaurant worker, barely making ends meet, I cannot fathom missing a day of work. Missing a day of work was economic death for me and hundreds of other thousands of workers in Minneapolis. I worked because I did not have the protections that a universal sick time policy has. The same protections included in the sick time policy that sits on all of your desks. And on top of this, what happens after you don't go back to work? What happens when you don't go back to work is your employer starts retaliating against you. That happened to me where like my hours were cut and basically I ended up getting fired. Once I got fired to take, basically taking care of myself, I couldn't pay my bills. I lost my car. I lost my house. So I had to move in with my mom. My mom received Section eight. Once I moved in with my mom, that some, for some reason, somebody found out that I was living there and she was almost about to lose her home. So not only does this affect me or affect the person that is actually sick or going through something, it affects their entire family. So councilmembers, I'm asking you to take a stand because like I lost everything and there are so many people who lost everything that they have because they did not have a protection like this. And I beg you to do something about this. We need sick time now. And I'm sure you will. Give us sick time now.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-two and then fifty-three, I see. And fifty-four is Kyle Macarios. Speaker fifty-five is Kathy.
Kathy? Hi, good afternoon, councilmen. Thank you for your time. I want to speak on behalf of myself and my fellow Asian restaurant owners. I feel that we are very underrepresented. And I am not against giving quality of life to employees. And I'm not against having employees, I, I don't want them to come into sick, to work if they're sick. And I will not want them to lose their wages because they're sick. I have been there, I've been doing business in Minneapolis for eleven years. And I'm proud to say that I'm able to provide paid hundred percent premium dental and health for my full-time employees after doing business for eleven years. I started with only six employees, including myself, eleven years ago. And I'm able to, you know, increase and have a second restaurant and have thirty or more and maybe more as we get busier. I want to be able to provide a good quality of life for them. But I feel the ordinance is written in a way that is hindering small business owners to want to open new businesses or open another business and want to do business in Minneapolis. to want to open new businesses or open another business and want to do business in Minneapolis. And I ask that you, I'm not against this ordinance. I believe we should provide sick and safe time for employees. But please work on the language of the ordinance. Where it will work for small business or micro-business, it does not fit our business models. One-size-fits-all does not work. And I feel, this is my personal opinion of how this ordinance is written, and I am against it. I ask that you look further into it and amend it and so that it will work better in a way. I will keep it short. I've heard a lot of compassionate stories and I'm empathetic of a lot of situations. I've been there. I've had no self-insurance. I had to consider whether I should go to the emergency room because I was very sick. I've been there. And I want to work hard for my employees, and I'm doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-three, and then fifty-four, speaker fifty-five. And then speaker fifty-six is Peggy Reinhardt. And any of those speakers still line up? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Glidden and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is John Stanek and I'm the interim president of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce. I appear before you today on behalf of that organization as well as the Workplace Fairness Coalition, which is comprised of a variety of business associations and employers across the city, including small, medium, and large-sized businesses. The Workplace Fairness Coalition shares the city's goal of broadening access to sick and safe leave across the city. But we are not able to support the one-size-fits-all approach that is contained in the proposed city ordinance in its current form. What I'd like to do in the interest of time is just to talk about some of the concerns we've heard from our members and ask you to consider these issues. One issue that we've heard a lot of, and to show you that one-size-fits-all is not just a slogan, we are concerned that there is not a clear carve-out or exclusion for those employers in the city of Minneapolis who are providing benefits at the level in the proposed ordinance or beyond. And we would seriously urge you to consider clarifying that matter. I'm an attorney by background and training, but I'm advised by lawyers who are much smarter than me in this area that it's not clear. We urge you to take a careful look at that, both as a way of recognizing those employers who are doing the right thing according to the proposed ordinance and incent others as well. We have a number of other items that admittedly go beyond clarification of intent to some substantive items, and I'll try to clip through those very, very quickly. Our small employers have asked you to consider raising the threshold from six or more employers to twenty-four or more. Our startup businesses have asked you to consider an exemption in the first five years of their operation. The regional dashboard indicators that was just released last Friday, one of the measurements is the number of businesses that succeed in our region beyond five years. And it's just slightly over half, so we'd ask you to look at that. Collective bargaining agreements. We'd ask you to look at the New York language, which says a collective bargaining agreement in place, the ordinance would not apply unless and till in a subsequent collective bargaining agreement, both parties explicitly waive the requirements. And we'd also ask you to consider raising, as Seattle has done, the threshold for employees coming into the city of Minneapolis beyond the eighty-hour threshold contained in the proposed ordinance to a higher number. We have other concerns, but we appreciate you considering these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-four, and if speakers fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven is Jeff Summers. I would like to just get ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Kyle Macarios and I work for the Carpenters Union. And Dan McConnell's out of town. He asked me to come and speak on behalf of the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council. Our mission is to make sure that construction workers make a good living and can take care of their families. And we strongly believe that workers should be able to take care of themselves when they're sick and stay home from work and should be able to take care of loved ones when they're sick as well. So we support the proposed ordinance. But we do want to say that we really appreciate that the proposed ordinance takes into account the special circumstances in much of the construction industry due to the transitory nature of our jobs and due to the fact that many of our members work for multiple employers over the course of a year. We want to thank you, council members and city staff who've come up with a solution to that. We support it and will continue to be engaged as we move forward if it needs any perfecting.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-five, and I couldn't read your last name, I apologize. And thank you, everyone else for line up.
Hi, my name is Kathy Harold Latham. I'm a mother and a resident of Minneapolis as well as the Director of Public Policy for the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association. We represent about eight hundred agencies across the state that employ about sixty thousand individuals each week in the city of Minneapolis and throughout the greater state of Minnesota. These individuals are employed in opportunities that are actually the bridge to long-term employment and better wages and opportunities that they would not otherwise have if they didn't have the opportunity to work with our members. The faces of contingent talent range from warehouse workers to accountants, teachers, and attorneys. It is a bigger problem and a bigger scale that this ordinance will impact. The biggest issue for our members is in the details. The unfortunate aspect of this one-size-fits-all is that in an industry where our employees go to multiple locations from a day-to-day basis, we cannot provide the same kind of notices to our employees that traditional employers can when the employee comes to the same location every single day and receives the exact same wage every single day. We are not able to calculate the same benefit because our employees make a different wage every day. There's no guidance in the ordinance as it stands and how we would accrue that, how we would calculate that, or how we would even track where our employees are in the city of Minneapolis or otherwise. There's no technology that exists right now. The devil is in the details. And we strongly oppose this ordinance because it prevents the, it prevents us from providing those opportunities to the people that this ordinance is intended to help. And that is why we oppose the ordinance.
Could you please say one more time the name of the organization you represent?
Sure, it's the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association.
Okay, thank you very much. Speaker fifty-six, and then speaker fifty-seven is Jeff Summers. Speaker fifty-eight is Abdurrahman Kahin. Speaker fifty-nine is Lonnie McQuirter. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Reinhardt, also known as Peggy Reinhardt. And I'm the Ward ten representative to the Public Health Advisory Committee. And that committee has previously submitted a letter of support of this ordinance to the Working Partnership. However, I'm here to speak about my observations about the impact of this ordinance. I respectfully ask the members of the Minneapolis City Council to consider the impact of unpaid sick time on the children of those workers who are often low-wage workers. Children are hurt in many ways by the sheer arbitrariness of whether or not an employer offers paid time off. I think you probably know, obviously, if there's a sick food service worker, restaurant worker, the consequences of that. However, if a worker drops off a sick child at school, you have more sick children, even teachers, and so it goes. And they do that because they are being forced to choose between work, money, and their child. And you know what? I wonder how a sick child feels about that when their parent drops them off for their job. There are other consequences for children when paycheck comes up short due to a sick parent missing work. For example, I noticed during a January fire alarm that, by the way, I tutor at Jefferson and Whittaker Schools. Forgot to mention that. I noticed that many kindergarten and first grade boys were shivering in short-sleeved shirts. No long sleeves, no undershirts, even some kids no socks. Why don't children have warm clothes? The loss of one day's pay due to sickness means there won't be enough money to buy warm clothes for a son or daughter. One kindergarten class started the school year with fourteen students, but by February, five of those students were gone and five new students had taken their place.
And if you could conclude your remarks, please?
Just primarily, all this to say, the lack of paid sick time impacts children. I see it in the mobility and instability of families caused when pay is docked and there's not enough money for rent, food, or clothing. I see it in stress and worry of a child when their parents fight over money. Without paid sick time, moms and dads take on multiple jobs and extra shifts.
Thank you.
And I urge you to support paid sick time as a sign that you represent the children of this city also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Fifty-seven is our next speaker, and then fifty-eight, if you are here.
Oh, councilmember, Chair person Glidden and councilmembers. Jeff Summers, owner of Izzy's Ice Cream. Thrilled to be here today and what an honor to see democracy gears turning. We work really hard in our business. We've, just as an example, we've probably employed over seven hundred people under the age of eighteen in our sixteen-year time in business. And it's really important for me to present to you some consideration of looking at the policy with respect to workers under the age of eighteen. I submitted some statements earlier today to all of you. And I just want to digress to a personal story to start. In our family, my mother dropped out of South High School at the age of sixteen to take care of her older sister and her two younger sisters due to the loss of her father and a mother that couldn't support the household. I get the, all of it. And so I then went on and graduated high school and college and taught Minneapolis Public Schools for nine years, seventh and eighth grade English. Izzy's as an organization is committed to serve and to lead in the community. There are elements of the proposal that make some of our work more difficult and potentially less successful. If for just a minor detail, this has happened in our sixteen-year history. If you will, there's been a worker who is under the age of eighteen who is called in sick, who social media has presented to us as not sick. They've been off to some other fun adventure. In this environment, as proposed, we would be in a very high-stakes condition with that young staff member who is now paid for their time off at an event. And the changes, the nature of which we, in sort of, if you will, the spirit of the kind and just parent, the redirection, the mentoring, the development of professional responsibility, building a workforce for the community and for global citizenship, it kind of straps our hands in terms of that dialogue by putting money into the equation. And so we ask that you consider some things for young workers. If you look at state and federal law, there are special considerations for young workers, both in terms of unemployment, healthcare, minimum wage, and I'm sure there are many more. So please take a look at the impacts that could sort of impact the community in ways that would limit the leadership, at least that we're trying to develop and build in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-eight. And then if speakers fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, if any of those other speakers are available, I'm not seeing any, only one other person, so I don't know who all is here.
Madam Chair.
And I know some might have left.
Speakers sixty and sixty-one have spoken.
Chair Glidden, councilmembers. Lonnie McQuirter, who owns One Thirty-Six, could not be here. He had actually a sick employee he had to take care of, and so he's working that shift right now and paying her. And Abdika Kahin also just got back from Africa and he was on the partnership group. He wanted to be here, but he couldn't make it either. So I'm speaking on every behalf. And I wasn't planning on speaking, but I realized I probably should. I with the State Direction, Director of Main Street Alliance of Minnesota, we're an advocacy network of small businesses. I've met with many of you. And I actually had the privilege of being in New Jersey while they were going through these discussions on earned sick and safe time. So in the fall of twenty thirteen, Jersey City was considering the same ordinance. And I worked with our members there to look at what kind of policy would work on earned sick and safe time. And a number of small businesses did support it. But same as here, it was very controversial. There were businesses who were really concerned and came out to the city council just to oppose it. There were businesses that supported it and already were providing these benefits. And it got passed in Jersey City. And two months later, Newark passed an even better ordinance. And it worked so well that two years later, six additional cities throughout New Jersey, Irvington, Trenton, East Orange, Passaic, I'm not going to remember all, I should have a list. But they passed the same thing. And it was very, I mean, it works. Nothing happens. Actually, Jersey City a few months ago went back and had to fix their policy to increase it to make sure that all workers have access to paid leave. They originally exempted businesses with fewer than ten employees. And that just didn't make any sense. So I urge you to pass the policy as recommended by the partnership group. I've been really impressed with the process. Six months, actually nine months of a public, very public debate. And the Workplace Partnership Group included small businesses at the table to help create a policy that it, they don't, the support, they actually helped create. The Small Business Office was a great recommendation and we hope that moves forward. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just, I'm going to call out some numbers just to double-check if someone is here with that number. So I think she was covering speakers fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Is there a speaker sixty? Okay. Are you speaker sixty?
I'm sixty-three.
You're sixty-three? The gentleman behind you was saying, did you? All right. So have you signed up to speak? What was your original number?
My number was sixty-nine. My name is Maurice Franklin.
Okay. Thank you, and I have you right here.
And I'm here on behalf of everyone, also Neighborhoods Organizer for Change. And I appreciate y'all being receptive to our stories. Hello, my name is Maurice. I'm currently a campus member for Not. I'm here to speak on a job that I had. I can't really speak on the company's name because we took legal, I took legal action against it. But I feel the bill should be passed for safe and sick time, not only in Minnesota, but universally. In two thousand fifteen, I worked for a company. I fell off the dock due to frivolous employee. I was hurt to the point I couldn't work. My boss was actually one who helped me. He actually helped me, picked me up, told me to go to the hospital. It was a Friday. He told me to come back on a Monday. When I came back that Monday, I didn't have a job no more. But the thing is, he sent me home. He sent me home, he told me I could come back. But when I got back, it was a whole different story. And I have, I have people I have to take care of as well as everyone else. And I feel like everyone here could agree with me. Y'all have family members that have been sick, y'all self have been sick. Y'all have to take care of emergencies that y'all can't do so because y'all working. So I just feel the paid, safe, and sick time will help us all out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So there was not a speaker sixty, or sixty-one, or sixty-two? That was sixty-three, I believe. Sixty-four? Okay, sixty-five? Okay. Speaker sixty-five, I think that you moved down to sixty-nine, right?
I'm sixty-three.
Right, but you allowed that gentleman to take your spot? So can I take the other speakers before you, just so we stay in order? And then I'll select you in right at sixty-three.
Do we have someone before sixty-three right now?
I think so. Sixty-four? Is that all right?
Sixty-three. I do have to leave and I'm the next number, I think.
We have gotten out of order here and, all right. I'm spending more time than necessary. Why don't you go ahead, introduce your name, please?
Sure, that's Daniel.
Okay.
I live in the twelfth ward.
All right.
Good to see you, Councilwoman Johnson. And I live in South Minneapolis. I am a mother. I am a self-employed person. I've been working as, for ten years, consulting on education. I work with public schools. I work with youth programs, other nonprofits, et cetera. And I would just like to say that I'm very much in support of this measure. And I think it's incredibly important. And it's an equity issue. It's a health issue. It's a family issue. I'd also like to say that, you know, we talk a lot about employees and employers. But in reality, every employee is a family member, is a community member. Many are parents, many are children or siblings, many are students. Employers likewise, we're all consumers. We all have multiple roles in society. And by providing this kind of support for workers, we're also providing support for the community and we're enabling people to earn money that will enable them to keep jobs and keep apartments and continue consuming and drive the engine of our economy. Very briefly, my own personal story is that I've been privileged to have earned sick and safe time throughout my career. And I have a daughter who has asthma. And when she was young, you know, if you've ever had, been around somebody with asthma, we would take her to urgent care or the emergency room. And if you take a child with, say, an ear infection to the emergency room, you're sick, maybe for hours. If you take a child with asthma, they get you in right away because it's urgent and because, you know, if they don't breathe, they're not going to make it. So obviously, we had to stay home with our daughter when she was sick to make sure she had proper care and was still alive when we got home. Therefore, if we had not had sick leave and safe time, we would not have been able to do that. My husband and I would have been strapped, we would have lost mom. My husband and I would have been strapped, we would have lost money, we would have lost possibly jobs, and, you know, we would have, our ability to provide a life for our family would have been severely compromised. So, we know how important this is, and as a city that is coming together and trying to overcome racial disparities, we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a speaker 64? Speaker 64? If there is a speaker 65, Sarah Nelson, please, and then speaker 66, if you could be ready. Okay? Thank you.
Mi nombre es Gerania Mata. Soy miembro del Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha, de SETUL, y estoy aquí a favor de esta enmienda.
Hi, my name is Gerania Mata, and I'm a member of the Center for Workers United in Struggle, and I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal.
A lo largo de cuatro años, yo he mirado muchas injusticias con los trabajadores. No solo salarios de miseria, de pobreza, sino que aparte no tienen beneficios. Por cada 100 trabajadores que he conocido, 90 o más del 95% no tienen días enfermos pagados.
So, over my four years as a member of SETUL, I've seen a lot of injustices. I've spoken, it's not just the poverty wages, but also lack of benefits that are affecting workers. I would say out of every 100 workers I've spoken to, 95 of them do not have benefits.
Una, una, una de los trabajadores que conocí dice que su hija estuvo en el hospital sola y ella se puso a llorar porque el trabajo no le dejaron ir al hospital con ella.
I know a worker who, she cried telling me this because her daughter was in the hospital and she was alone there because at her job, they told her she couldn't take off time to be with her daughter.
Y la enfermera le dijo que no, su hija no era la única, que había muchos niños ahí sin padres porque en el trabajo no les dejaban ir.
And the nurse told her that this was not a unique case, that there were a lot of children in the hospital who were alone because their parents couldn't get time off work.
Y para mí, el discurso de los pequeños negocios y grandes negocios es una tontería porque los trabajadores, aunque uno se enferme, su negocio sigue trabajando, ¿verdad? Siguen ganando dinero.
And so, some of the arguments that I've heard from business owners, both large and small, have seemed foolish to me because even if a worker is sick, the business is still running, and the business is still making money.
Me gustaría que si no pasan esta enmienda de dar días enfermos pagados como debe de ser, pues que las corporaciones y los patrones también el día que se enfermen no reciban su dinero de su negocio, ¿verdad?
So, I think that if this proposal doesn't pass, then if workers aren't allowed to take paid sick time, that corporations be, that they lose money and profits as well.
Gracias. Thank you very much. The speaker 65?
Buenas, mi nombre es Elmer.
Is that all right? Okay, all right. That's all. Okay. And could you say your, introduce your name as well? It's hard to read on the written sheet.
Okay, mi nombre es Elmer Santa Cruz Baire.
My name is Elmer Santa Cruz Baire.
Y el cual estoy contento porque sé que hoy en día vamos a pasar esta ordenanza porque están escuchando la voz del pueblo para, para el cual fue electo el pueblo, ustedes fueron electos por el pueblo y están escuchando, me alegro. En el 2004 yo tuve una experiencia.
So, I'm really happy to be, that you all are here listening to the voices of the people. I know that you were elected by the people, and so I have hope that this ordinance is going to pass today.
En el 2004 yo trabajaba para una fábrica de diseños de madera, y el cual era el único que sabía hacer ese diseño, cual nunca me dieron permiso para ir a trabajar, a ver al médico, el cual yo sentía que tenía vómitos y dolores de cabeza, y nunca me chequeé por largo tiempo.
So, in 2004, I was working in a, in a factory. I was making wood designs, and I was a skilled worker, the only person who knew how to make this specific wood design. And because, because I was valued, actually, I wasn't allowed to take time off, and I felt that I was sick, I was vomiting, I had pain in my head.
Hasta que un día no me pude levantar y me llevaron de emergencia a la clínica de la ley.
Until one day, I simply could not get out of bed, and I was taken to the emergency room on Lake Street.
Que fue lo que encontraron cuando me hicieron los exámenes de emergencia, que ya no que tenía infección en el cerebro.
And so, when they checked me out, they told me that I had an infection in my brain.
Y que fue lo que pasó? Me hicieron la cirugía en el cerebro? ¿Qué pasó con estaba haciendo la cirugía? Me vino un derrame cerebral.
And so, they had to perform brain surgery on me, and it caused, I had a stroke.
El cual eso me trae consecuencias, estoy en vida, la parte izquierda de mi cuerpo está muerta. Si yo hubiese tenido días de enfermedad, hubiese tenido permiso por los jefes, lo hubiera ido al médico inmediatamente y no estuviera como soy ahorita.
And this is affecting my body even today, like the left side of my body is partially dead, like I can't, I don't have like the full capacity in my body, and if I had had access to paid sick days, I would not be having these consequences today.
Hoy en día soy organizador en el SEIU Local 26, el cual yo escucho estas historias que a mí venían pasando, las escucho a diario, y yo siento que esto es una urgencia pasar este, esta...
So, today, I'm an organizer with SEIU Local 26, and day in and day out, I hear these same stories from workers, and so I feel a lot of urgency that we pass this proposal.
Gracias, pero que pasen esta ordenanza porque los trabajadores se lo agradecerán.
So, thank you, and I hope you pass this proposal because workers will really appreciate it.
Speaker 65, and then if we could see speaker 67, Molly, Molly. Speaker 68, Tressa Casey. Speaker 69, I believe, has spoken. Speaker 70 is Tim Mahoney.
Hi, thanks. My name's Sarah Nelson. I live in South Minneapolis. I'm currently a PhD student at the University of Minnesota. But prior to that, I worked in many different service, retail, and manual labor jobs in several states and abroad, from my first job when I was 13 until the age of 27 when I went to grad school. So, I do speak from experience when I say how detrimental it is to one's health and to one's productivity to be forced to work while sick, especially as a low-wage worker with precarious employment. But since others here today have spoken to the employee experience much more effectively than I can, I just want to voice my support of this ordinance as a resident of Minneapolis. On what I think is an obvious level, paid sick and safe leave is a public health issue. Sick employees pose a risk of contagion to their coworkers and to their customers, as we've heard. There's also now a great deal of research demonstrating that paid sick leave increases workplace productivity. But beyond these basic facts, paid sick and safe leave is a human rights issue. I don't want to live in a city where people have to choose between their health and the health of their children or dependents and their job. I don't want to live in a city where people have to choose between their personal safety and their ability to pay their rent. This ordinance could be one of our most effective tools for addressing racial and economic justice in Minneapolis, as low-income workers stand to benefit most from this policy, as we've heard. In a recent study by the Center for Economic Policy Research comparing sick leave in 22 of the richest countries in the world, the U.S. was the only country that has no national policy guaranteeing paid leave for long-term illness, and one of only three that does not provide paid leave for short-term sicknesses. As research by the World Health Organization and other international institutions has shown, the U.S. stands alone among developed countries in not having such a national policy. This ordinance is consistent with a growing trend among U.S. states and cities to cover this gap in federal policy. It makes crucial interventions that would significantly improve workers' lives, the welfare of their families, and public health and productivity in general. But it's still a small step towards the kinds of social welfare policies that would be necessary to address Minneapolis's persistent racial and economic disparities. The city council should pass this ordinance with all of its essential provisions, not water it down or weaken it by excluding certain classes of workers. It's good for workers, and it's good for the economy, and it's good for Minneapolis. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a speaker 67? If not, is there a speaker 68? Come forward. And then I think the next will be Tim Mahoney, and then after that, 71, Ashley Fairbanks.
Hi, my name is Tressa Casey. I live in Whittier neighborhood. I am a public health nurse. I work with Hennepin County Medical Center, and my opinions are not the same as whatever. I don't want to get sued. Okay. I see, I see adults in the home setting. Most of them that I see, it's too late for them to receive earned, earned sick and safe time. Many rely on social security disability or have to spend down their assets to get medical assistance, or don't even qualify for necessary benefits, and it's devastating. This is especially devastating because a lot of the clients I work with have diagnoses that are manageable if they were given the correct resources, if they were given the correct treatment and education, like diabetes, CHF, COPD, asthma, different mental health diagnoses. A lot of my clients' stories start with being unable to go to doctor's appointments due to scheduling issues, or going back to work against medical advice after surgeries to ensure they don't lose their job, or increasing need for care in the ER. This is absolutely a disparity issue. This is absolutely disproportionately affects the Black, Native, immigrant, and refugee communities. These communities have historically been left out of unions, unable to get medical care, and have had numerous other policies that have been purposefully passed to treat these communities unequally. On top of the historical and current experiences of trauma and personal disrespect, we owe it to these communities to pass this now. And I would like to specifically address the comments made by the majority of health professionals and health facility managers that came today related, using, related to the verbiage of casual workers. I urge you to not not pass this ordinance because of this. As healthcare professionals, we have to remember that any issues that we have as disproportionately lily-white organizations is nothing compared to what our patients have gone through and go through every day. Please put the needs of our community as a priority over health professional issues because health professionals are responsible for perpetuating and validating racism to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, I believe, is number 70, as 69 already went. I just want to ask, I think we're getting to a period where some people may have left or traded their numbers, so I want to ask if there are numbers 71, 72, 73, 74, 75? Anybody come forward? And then also, so that you know, after this speaker, I'm going to transfer the chair to Councilmember Johnson, who will continue to run the public hearing. Thank you, sir.
Madam Chair, fellow council. My name is Tim Mahoney. I own a Loon Cafe in downtown Minneapolis. I've been a small business owner for over 30 years. I'm also the president of the Warehouse District Business Association. Over the last six months, we've been dealing with this sick leave and other things involved with this. I've been to many meetings, and a lot of small businesses like myself have a lot of hard questions. I don't believe this ordinance has answered any of those questions. We're worried about them. It's a big issue for the small business owner like myself. So, as the Warehouse District Business Association President, I have problems with it for my people. But as an owner of a small business, I'm going to tell you directly, because of the short time, what it'll do for my business and what, the decisions that I'm going to have to make. One size does not fit all. But the main decision for me is, my cost of goods will go up. Other people, deliveries, salesmen, purveyors, anyone that does business in this city, will have to raise their fees or whatever they're charging me to accommodate this. That gives me a disadvantage to everybody around us, first-ring suburbs, second-ring suburbs, third-ring suburbs, and et cetera. The other question I have for you is, for me who offers health insurance, how does this affect my health insurance program? Do I, do I still offer 100%? Probably not. Do I offer 50%? Maybe, maybe less. Now, who does that help? Certainly doesn't help my employees. The other thing is, the way this ordinance is written, when you start talking about 30 hours a week. When Obamacare came in, Applebee's mandated that their full-time employees would go down to 27 hours a week so they wouldn't have to pay it. So, now what's going to happen? I'm going to be put in a position where, do I make my employees 30 hours and less? Or do I continue to let them make the money that they're used to making? The other question I have for you as a, as a business owner is, the administration time that we have is limited. We're working all the time. It's not a, you know, nine-to-five job. Administration keeping track of these hours and all that sorts of stuff for a small business is going to affect us. Another thing...
And Mr. Mahoney, if you could wrap up or get close to it, please.
Well, here's the situation. How are we going to pay for this? The mayor was at our annual meeting with Jacob the other day. She said you had a budget $200,000. Well, I don't think $200,000 is going to cover it the way it is right now. So, the question you have to ask yourself is, when we get down this path, who's going to pay for it? How are we going to pay for it? There's questions that the small business owners want to know, want to be answered, and they're not. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So, I'm going to transfer the chair right now to Councilmember Johnson, and he will continue to call on speakers.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Our next speaker is Ashley Fairbanks, number 71, and we also have number 72, 73. Is 71 here? No, we'll go on to 72. Are you 72, 75? All right. Anybody else in between? We'll have them...
Can I jump in?
Yes, please.
My name is Todd Farrara. I'm a resident of Linden Hills neighborhood. I also own a business at 130 Plymouth Avenue in Minneapolis, Standard Heating and Air Conditioning. I want to just say that, for the record, my company and the various businesses that I'm associated with have very generous paid personal time. We just changed our personal time to 160 hours the first year of paid personal time. I am opposed to this ordinance, and I'll just say why I'm opposed to this ordinance. You know, we have problems in our city of poverty. We have problems that need to be solved, and I absolutely honor and respect your position and the responsibilities that you have in making decisions to affect things like crime and poverty and social justice. However, I just do not believe a municipal government should be doing this sort of ordinance. I think this is a state matter or a federal matter. I think you should, and I would be happy to even lobby for state efforts to mandate this. But I just think that the city of Minneapolis ought not be in the, in the business of doing this. And one of my main indicators is, when I hear business organizations and small businesses talk about the overburdened some regulation, believe me, I know, I'm a contractor. I know a lot of city regulation and how it impacts my business. This is just adding more and more to the regulations, to the administration that's required. My concern is that you are just not listening to your businesses. You're not listening to the very engine that's creating opportunity. So, I believe in the free market system, and I just believe that this should be a state matter, not a city matter. I do not want to see a city Minneapolis Labor Department that's regulating businesses in this manner. But I recognize, you know, that you're going to probably vote for this today. I just wanted to come down and express my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, number 76. And then we have speaker 77 after that, Greg King.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Emilio Miranda Rivas. Soy de México. Estoy aquí.
Good afternoon. My name is Emilio Miranda. I'm from Mexico.
Estoy aquí para ayudar a apoyar esta causa.
And I'm here to support this cause.
Hace tiempo, cuando yo llegué, yo trabajaba en la compañía de Kimco, y después era Yuris.
I worked for several years for a company called Kimco that later would change its name to Yuris.
Por siete años, sin parar ni un día, todos los días trabajaba.
And I worked seven days without missing a single day.
Mi esposa se enfermó y la llevé a un operativo. Pedí permiso para que estuviera con ella en el hospital en la operación, y no me lo quisieron dar.
And my wife got sick, had to get an operation at the hospital. The company would not give me any time to take off.
Si hubiera pasado algo peor, hubiera muerto, jamás la volvería yo a ver en vida.
And if, if something would have happened to her, or she could have ended up dead, ah, crap, I might be screwing up this translation. Repito...
Si algo hubiera pasado, o ella hubiera muerto, jamás la hubiera yo volvido a ver en vida.
Oh, he's saying, if something terrible would have happened, it would, it would be impossible for me to keep living.
Cuando yo después, yo me senté allá en la compañía, pasaron como tres meses y la compañía no apoyaba en nada, y cuando yo juntamos un poquito de dinero y vinimos Y cuando yo juntamos un poquito de dinero, vinimos al doctor, y el doctor me dijo, si esto tú te dieran atendido con tiempo, tú no hubieras pasado estos meses con ese dolor. Y yo, en la pobreza en la que estábamos, y sin pedir ningún beneficio por parte de la compañía, ahí íbamos a la iglesia hasta pedir comida para sus testigos, porque la compañía ningún ayuda me daba.
And so, I had an incident at one point, and resulted me going to the hospital. Ultimately, the doctors told me, if you would have come in many months earlier, we would have been able to solve this problem a lot earlier, would have resolved a lot of pain. This situation led me to actually having to go to the church to ask for food, because I wasn't able to support my own family.
Por eso es justamente necesario de que este paso se llegue a cabo para beneficiar no nomás a los trabajadores, se beneficiarían todos, porque habría una igualdad.
And that's why it's important that this law is passed, so that not just for workers, but that everybody has equality.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you. Gracias. Speaker 77, Greg King.
Good evening. My name is Greg King. I live in the Hill Page Diamond Lake neighborhood, Ward 11. And I'm excited to be here today. Thank you for creating this exciting opportunity for Minneapolis to take a step in the right direction. I happen to be someone who does have paid sick time, but I'm also here on behalf of my brother, who lives in northeast Minneapolis at 26 and Polk, and who could never come to something like this, because he works, and he works an awful lot. He works in the food service industry. He's been a head chef, a sous chef, a line cook, a caterer, a food truck owner. And working is not the problem. He's put in 60, 70 hours a week. Like me, he has a family to take care of. The problem is, he's got a chronic lifelong health condition. And I know that, when it comes to questions of whether he's going to stay paying the bills and staying in his house, or whether he's going to take care of himself, I know what he's going to choose, because he's been choosing it for years. And so I'm very excited to see this ordinance proposed. It's an opportunity for him to take care of himself and his family. And also, as a member of ISAA, a faith-based group that works on racial and social justice, I believe that we are called to care for each other and to build a beloved community. I believe we have the resources to do that. I know we do. And I believe that this is a step away from the race to the bottom, that a lot of the narratives tell us is the way to go, to remain competitive. We have to take care of people like my brother. They're the lifeblood of the city. They're taxpayers, they're customers, they're workers. And although he's in a company today that will cover him, more than six employees, I know that two weeks from now, in the food service, he could be in a catering company of three people. So I urge you to take this step and quickly look at how we can embrace every worker in our city. And then I look forward to working with our business partners on expanding it to the states, so we don't have to track people everywhere. So, thank you.
Thank you. Number 78, or 79, 80? Anyone? 80, all right.
Hi, my name is Kristen Melby, and I live in the Longfellow neighborhood. I also teach in Anderson School with Minneapolis Public Schools in the Phillips neighborhood. And I've worked in the district for over 10 years. And I'm here to say that when we talk about paid sick time, we're not talking about a bureaucratic inconvenience for employers. We're talking about the health and well-being of students, and children, and families. And no one thinks that it's okay to send your kid to school when they're sick. I see every day, kids come to school sick, and they get sicker until they need to go to the emergency room. And it's not because their parents don't care, but they have an impossible choice to make. And I think it's shameful that it's 2016, and parents are still put in that position. As an educator, what that does is, it means more children in my classroom get sick, because sick kids make other kids sick. And it puts other families in a terrible situation. And while I'm really excited about this possibility, I feel like, how have we waited so long? And I can't, I can't believe that, like, nothing I would expect someone else to do, that I wouldn't expect someone else who has kids to have to make those decisions. I have a child here. Just this week, I took a day off so I could stay home with him. Why doesn't everyone have that right? To me, this is a human right. It's basic. We have a lot of other amazing things that we can do, and the city council can do, but this is very basic. If we can't take care of our families, and maybe break the microphone, then we can't do anything else. I also just want to really quickly add that it was an honor to have Ms. Conno in our classroom this past week, and she inspired our students to action, and they have been talking about it all week. And this is exactly the kind of work that the city council needs to be doing. And that's, that makes me proud to be a Minneapolis resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 81, or 82? Excellent. We could also have 82 and 83 line up? Yes?
My name's Philip Lictag. I live in Minneapolis in the Kingsfield neighborhood. I want to just say thank you to the council for having in this public hearing. I also work at the Minneapolis Public Schools. I'm just going to kind of piggyback off of what Kristen was saying. I work in an elementary school. Obviously, public schools are, you know, at the front line of public health in our country and our city. And every day, you know, you see children, you know, with sniffles or, you know, and various maladies. And I'm personally glad that I have a union contract that allows me to have personal time off for sick leave, basically, because when you're exposed to that, you know, you really need to have that, so you're not further infecting other children. I just want to share, hopefully, a quick anecdote about a student that I worked with last fall. He, his mother and father work two jobs every day. They make barely above minimum wage, if that. And the student, who I care about a lot, fell sick very early in the morning. And we took him to the nurse's office, you know, he laid there. As the day went on, you know, he developed a fever and it started increasing. We had called mom and dad numerous times, you know, we were trying to get the parents to come in. And, you know, they were at work, and they weren't able to get out of work. And even if they had gotten out of work, it would have meant lost income. It would have meant, you know, more hardship for them. So it's, by the time his parents were finally able to come, at the end of the school day, he, later that night, ended up in the emergency room. And I just can't help but think that if he, if his parents hadn't, had been able to come earlier, that that could have been avoided some way. And, you know, I know it burdened the family, too, because all of a sudden, there were these health expenses that got added, that they probably wouldn't have had to have if there had been a sick leave available for them. So just as an educator, I think it is evident that parents and childrens need paid sick leave. You know, there should be an ordinance that mandates that. And many, you know, because many parents are living paycheck to paycheck, it obviously needs to be compensated and paid. So, you know, just for the sake of the health and well-being of our children and our parents, I really urge the council to support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 82, which is our last on the list, and we'll have an opportunity for anyone else who hasn't signed up. Please.
Hi, I'm Speaker 82, I guess. My name is Tad Henenkamp. I am an educator in the public schools. I've been in part of the public schools for about eight years. My current position is, I'm an SEA, which is a Special Education Assistant at St. Joe's, Home for Children, but I work on the public school side there. As an educator, I feel it's really imperative that everyone in my community receive paid sick days, especially parents who need to take care of their children. I know that I've done that myself for my stepchild, and then as well, I've done it for my own sicknesses, like from appendicitis to pink eye to any number of illnesses. When I need a day off, I'm very grateful that I can take that day off and get paid for it. I see firsthand the difficulties that a lot of parents face when their child is sick. These are decisions that I feel that no parents should have to, should ever have to make, and they disproportionately affect single parents, I would say women, and people of color. When parents have no paid sick days, they are put in a terrible predicament. Do they send their child to sick, sick to school? Do they stay at home and take care for their child, or risking potentially job termination or a loss of wages? And in low-wage work especially, you need that payday, because you are living paycheck to paycheck in order to cover the basic needs. So oftentimes, parents must leave their child at home alone with someone that they might not be able to trust, whether that's a boyfriend, or a cousin, or an uncle, a neighbor, or whoever. And this option doesn't cost a lot of money, but it can set up an unsafe situation where the young daughter, or son, or whoever is left with an uncaring, uncaring, or even a predatory adult. Like I said, I work at Metro St. Joe's, and most of the young children I work with have experienced unimaginable trauma due to sexual, physical, and emotional abuse from predatory adults. And a lot of times, these are situations where a parent has had to place them in a situation that was unsafe. And once again, these children will live a lifetime, a lifetime of nightmares due to this abuse. And as a community, I think we need to do more to protect our children and give dignity to our parents. What's wrong with giving single moms and parents earned sick days so they can take care of their child? No hard-working parents should lose their job or days paid because their child is sick. So I just think it's the right moral thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. That is the last of the speakers that have signed up. Is there anyone here who has not spoken today who would like to speak? If so, please come on up. And afterwards, if you could state your name, and then afterwards, if you could go over to our city clerk here, and make sure you just sign in, so we have your information for the record.
Yeah, absolutely. My name is Tony Williams. I'm an organizer. I live at 2412 Jefferson Street Northeast in Ward 1. I just want to say, thank you all for this marathon of listening to people's concerns about all of this work today. This is something that we can move forward on. This is something that can absolutely change the fabric of how our city relates to each other. And it's not nearly as worrisome as people come to expect, you know, looking at a lot of these other cases. A lot of the same objections and worries and neuroses came up when ordinances were proposed like this in San Francisco, and California, and other places. The fact of the matter is that, when all is said and done and the dust settles, even the business owners support all of this stuff. You know, the San Francisco Chamber of Commerce is overwhelmingly in favor of this. The vast majority of sick days generated in California on a regular basis don't even get used, because employees don't need to use them as efficiently. So I just want to say, you know, it's clear that there's some consternation about this, but when all the dust settles, and you all have made the right decision, I'm confident that this is going to work out really well for everybody. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, please approach the mic.
Hello, my name's Chris Jones. I live in Ward 7 now. I'm a physician assistant, and I am in favor of this proposal, because I routinely have to try to convince sick and injured patients to not go back to work because they're sick and injured. And sometimes I win that discussion, and they take a few days off, and sometimes I don't, and they go back. And primary reason they go back is that they can't afford it, because they either don't have paid time off, they're going in trouble with their managers, they might lose their jobs. And it's something I see pretty much every day. And I think, right now, I work outside of the city limits, so it wouldn't directly affect many of my patients, but some of them do work here. And it would also, if this were to spread to surrounding communities, if that's successful here, then maybe someday, not too soon, my patients don't have that protection. I would also like to say, I wasn't here earlier when my employer was up here. I guess they were not in favor of the proposal. And I want to say that myself, I'm assuming the administrator who is up against it, I understand why, I understand how healthcare works and doesn't work, and the margins are very tight, and they have to, really, it's their job to really be on top of that, but I can pretty much guarantee that person has plenty of sick time, makes all the people in the room making those decisions, have plenty of sick time. Person who hired them has sick time. I have paid sick time, and I make, it seems like, a lot of money, and I'm pretty sure that person probably. I'm not sure who was here actually talking, but the person, if it wasn't the actual administrator who made that decision, that person who told that person to come here and talk makes even more money than I do. So, and what I'm hearing, and I understand, we need to listen to the business community and the technical issues, and certainly helping small businesses navigate a bureaucracy well and quickly is going to be very, make everything successful for everyone, and I think it's important. But from what I've heard in the time that I've been here, is the people like, upper-middle-class people like me, and owning-class folks being against it, and, but then every person who is here is a working class or a lower-middle-class person talking is for it, and the people this is going to help is the lower-class, the working-class folks, and the people it doesn't affect, who already have this privilege, are people like me. So, I hope you all support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this issue? Anyone else? Oh, yes. All right, please, come on over.
Hi, my name is Claudia Rivera. I live at 3222 DuPont Avenue North, and I am here to support the proposal. I think Minneapolis needs earned sick and safe time. It's a matter of public health, and it's also a racial justice issue. It's very clear who this affects. It's very obvious what the people who don't have PTO look like in this city specifically. And so, as a racial justice issue, as a public health issue, I urge you to please pass this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else here to speak who hasn't had an opportunity to? Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one else, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. I want to thank everyone who came out here today to speak. I want to thank as well our staff on this. We do have a motion before us to receive and file the presentation from earlier, so we need a discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, we're good. That unanimously passes. I'm going to ask our city clerk, if we have anything else here before us.
Mr. Chair, just for the public who are here, and also for those who may be watching from home, as a way of public notice, to point out that the proposed paid sick and safe time ordinance now will hold over to a special meeting of this committee that we have scheduled for next Thursday, and the notice has already been given for Thursday, May 26, beginning at noon, at which time council members would be able to bring forward any amendments or modifications to improve or perfect the draft ordinance into a final form or other actions that they might be taking at that time, with the idea that it could be anticipated, the ordinance would be pushed forward to the full council for final action at its regular meeting next Friday, May 27. That meeting begins at 9:30 in the morning, again, in this chamber. Both of those meetings, the special committee meeting set for next Thursday, and also the full council meeting next Friday, are open to the public, again, connected in this chamber. And the agendas and supporting materials for those meetings are posted to the city's website.
Thank you, Mr. Carl. Seeing no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.